All right, Broadcast Statement, Student Member.
This meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District is recorded. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be closed captioned and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Monday, September 8th at 12:00 p.m. and Thursday, September 11th at 6:00 p.m. on Metro Cable, Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetroCable14. We welcome all members of the audience to address the Board. Please complete a speaker forum which are located at the back of the room and give them to our Communications Representative, along with any handouts you may have for the Board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the Board and state your name for the record. Please limit any comments during public comments to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask you to defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cellphones or place them on silent mode. Thank you.
Thank you. 4.3 Stellar Student, introduced by Board Member, Chino Rhodes.
Action, we're gonna have our Principal of Harkness Elementary School come up. We're gonna flip the switch a little bit, and she's going to present her students today. Come up to the podium, Principal Cline. Can we give a round of applause for our principal? And then, if there's, also if there's any staff, anybody who wants to stand with her as well, please come up.
I would love it.
Let's go for staff, staff at Harkness. Floor is yours, floor is yours.
It is such an honor to celebrate these two stellar students. Adam, come over here, because I want everyone to see you. From Harkness, they really capture what it means to be a Viking, and our whole team is so excited to recognize them this evening with all of you. So I'm going to start with Adam Dickey. This is the special guy. Adam is a bright and hardworking 4th grader who brings positivity and determination to everything he does. Known for his sharp mind and analytical thinking, he approaches challenges with resilience and never gives up. His friends and the Harkness staff admire him not only for his strong work ethic, but also for his kindness and sense of humor. Adam Dickey is well-liked by peers and teachers alike, and he serves as a wonderful example of brilliance, perseverance, and the power of a great attitude. And now, I'm going to talk about Reiken. Reiken Brooks is a 6th grader who has shown great growth in English Language Arts over the past year, jumping a performance band on Casp. She is thoughtful and creative in her work, bringing fresh ideas and imagination to all she does. Known for being a kind and dependable friend, she avoids conflict and instead focuses on building positive relationships with those around her. Her creativity, caring nature, and steady progress make her a wonderful part of our Harkness community.
That's my student!
Thank you very much.
No problem, I love the energy, beautiful, that's my student, that's amazing. And to the families that are in space too, the school site is a loving school site, and you see the love that they have for the students and community, and be out all together is a very beautiful thing. Do we have any of the students that want to say a couple words? You don't have to, you do not have to.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Okay, so the whole Board is gonna come down, and we're gonna take a picture with you guys. And so, families, if you'd like to jump in the pictures, we can have staff take pictures and send them your way as well. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Adam, congratulations.
You can come in, because we will send you a picture. Come in, be part.
Switch a little bit, we have to switch.
Thank you, that was beautiful. I know I'm starting probably in the last minute, but I think it felt really comedic. All right, thank you, everyone, that was beautiful. 5.0, Ann, do we have any announcements of action taken in closed session?
Good evening, President Singh, there are no announcements out of closed session this evening.
Nice. Agenda adoption, do we have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Motion, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Oh, okay, he's gonna hand out certificates. We are moving on to 7.0, Public Comment, Brian, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have about 10 or so speakers. We will begin, pardon me, we'll begin with Victoria Kim, followed by Heba Talah Nazmi, and then Monica Harvey, with a total of four cards for eight minutes for Ms. Harvey.
Hello. Good evening, Board. My name is Victoria Kim, and I am a parent and a teacher in this school district. I'm here to speak out, not just for myself, but for the hundreds of families whose children still haven't been able to start school due to massive delays at the Enrollment Center. Let me be clear, this is not a new issue. This has been happening year after year, and is completely and utterly unacceptable. Families are left in limbo, children are missing out on critical days, even weeks of instruction, and despite the promises, this keeps happening. I submitted every document I had as soon as I was hired. My daughter's inter-district transfer from Elk Grove Unified School District was approved and sent to SUSD before the school year even started. And yet, here we are in September, and I've been told the Enrollment Center will not even look at my daughter's paperwork until the end of September. At that point, she will have missed close to almost eight weeks of school. I work for this district, I go to school every single day, but I can't bring my own child to school because the district's own systems are broken. That is not just inefficient, it's inequitable. Every delay in enrollment widens the equity gap this district claims to care so deeply about. What are we telling our students? That they matter unless there's paperwork? That education is a right unless the system is too backed up to provide it? I mean, coming in here today, I'm looking how it says Attendance Awareness Month, and that poster over there says Insert Student Here for Maximum Learning, Everyday Counts, yet my child cannot come and sit in a classroom because of enrollment delays. This is a systemic failure. We have a district with over 40,000 students and fewer than 20 people handling the enrollment? That is poor planning, that is unsustainable, and worst of all, it is harmful. Enrollment should be handled at the school sites. Principals and office staff know their communities. They are better equipped to manage the process in real time. Centralizing everything has only created bottlenecks, delays, and very unnecessary hardship. Every day a child is out of school is a day they fall behind, and right now, this district is directly responsible for that harm. This has to change, not next year, now. Please fix it, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Heba. I recently moved to Sacramento from Oklahoma with my husband and four kids. As soon as I received my job offer and paperwork, I applied online to enroll my three children in schools. I did my due diligence to find a home close to a K-28 school, especially because my husband has a medical condition which makes him unable to drive, and we are a limited income, so I'm the only one who's responsible for school drops off and pickups. I was surprised and concerned to learn that while two of my children were placed at a school that's just 0.2 miles from our home, my middle schooler was placed at a different school, three miles away, and this separation has caused significant hardship for our family. I teach at SAC State, and my classes run into the evening. This makes it nearly impossible for me to pick up my son on time. We have tried several solutions after multiple correspondence and meetings with the Office of Constituent Services, but none were efficient nor sustainable. The Office of Constituent Services denied my request to transfer my son with his siblings to the school, and they suggested an after-school program and city buses. I tried the after-school program, but I was late due to my teaching schedule. The teachers called me and explained that I must pick up my son by 6:00 p.m. sharp. They kindly waited with him as a one-time exception, but they made it clear that I could not do this again. The city bus route involves long walks, multiple transfers, and raises safety concerns, especially in bad weather. The school principal was very kind to help my son with the bus routes a few times, but still, my son could not do the trip on his own. The daily routine is taking a toll on my son emotionally and physically, and it's placing a strain on our family's ability to function. I have had similar situations where I made exceptions for college students to enroll in my courses so they can graduate on time, for example. I understand the importance of flexibility in serving students' best interests, and I respectfully ask that you consider the same for my son. I'm respectfully requesting that my middle schooler be granted a hardship transfer to the nearest school with his siblings. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, President Singh, Superintendent Allen, Board Members, Student Board Member. I'm Monica Harvey, this is my 31st year at SAC City Unified. I've been a speech-language pathologist that whole time. Out of the 10 newly hired speech-language pathologists, five names are showing an 8.1G personnel transactions. This is such a positive for this district. We now have 47 district SLPs, but we still need 60. And we were hoping for a smooth start to the school year, but that didn't happen. First, it took us up to 15 days to get our caseloads, this has set us weeks behind. Second, the retirees were terminated. These are SLPs who are assigned to school sites with caseloads of students and have been without email, infinite campus, Google Drive, or the SPED database access. And we really need our SLP retirees, but they feel like they're ready to walk. And then, third, SLPs are without test kits and test protocols needed to assess students. We have no idea how much special ed has budgeted to provide the tools and materials. We need to do our jobs. I know other districts provide for their new hires and have a budget for test kits and materials. Fourth, my colleague Kelly and I are going to SAC State. We want to share how great this district is to work in. I love my school site, I love my students, I love my fellow SLP colleagues. We're a great group, and we want to keep growing it. But we do need a lead SLP to help with all of the issues that I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nan Tron with two cards and four minutes. We also have Elia Bassin for two minutes.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Allen. I'm here as a concerned parent caught in a cycle of conflicting information and frustration. My daughter Elizabeth was number one on the Alice Bonney waitlist for kindergarten. A seat is open, yet she remained unenrolled. The Enrollment Center assured me that if a seat opened after July 31st, we could still enroll. I called Alice Bonney on the first day of school and was thrilled to hear that a seat has opened up and to go to the Enrollment Center to enroll. I rushed there as quickly as possible, only to have my hopes crushed. And when they told me the school should handle enrollment after July 31st, this back and forth was not just inconvenient, it was cruel. Each office sent me to the other, and each time, I believed I was getting closer to enrolling my daughter, only to be told that it was impossible. This constant loop of hope and disappointment has been emotionally draining, and is causing a level of stress that I would never wish on any parent. It has been demoralizing and discouraging because Alice Bonney is the only public Waldorf option in our area. The only alternative is Chamillion Waldorf, a private school with nearly 20,000 in annual tuition. Waldorf education is a strong fit for my daughter. And it's deeply frustrating to see a public school seat go unfilled while she's denied access, not due to lack of space, but because of our breakdown in district process. This feels like a disservice both to my daughter and to the Alice Bonney community, which now has a class under enroll despite children eager and ready to attend. I understand the need for consistent policy, but when policy directly harms students, and when they block an available seat for a child that was promised a chance, it's not just an administrative issue, it's a matter of fairness and compassion. Beyond my personal situation, this also highlights a broader systemic issue. Last year, two kindergarten seats at Alice Bonney went unfilled for the entire year, even as families waited. Closing waitlists two weeks before school starts doesn't account for the reality that seats often open right up at the start of the year. It leaves families like mine in a state of confusion and helplessness while children who could be in school are left waiting. I ask that you allow my daughter to enroll now and to reconsider this policy so that families acting in good faith are not failed by the system. The district's responsibility is to serve students and not be bound by rigid policies. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, thank you, everyone, for your time. I also, as I come up here, I want to give credit to all the Advisory Boards and the Black Pearl School Board for all the work that they do, which is vastly more than anything I've done in my one complaint topic that I've been here for a couple years now. It's been six months, and so I haven't met a couple of you here. I'm gonna start first round with the background. I've talked to four board members over my years at SAC Unified about us trying to do it. All of the fighting that we have, every meeting that I hear, all comes down to us not having enough money. And our school district has lots of unique, challenging things we can do, and I think we should do tax in addition. It's great that we have bonds for all of our infrastructure, but I've talked to four board members, and they say, oh, we have plenty of money. They've told me, oh, we need to get our ducks in order first. They've all had different stories that they've told me why we can't do a tax. But I think every single ballot, we should put it on there, I know it's going to be hard, but the best thing we can do for our property values is have the best school district here. That's the best return. Second, I tried to be a board member for one year. I did like a pretend when I was making my comments, while on every board, trying to be educated on every single thing you guys voted on. And to give you credit, I think your job is impossible. This is a massive budget that you guys are overseeing, and a lot of topics, and a lot of things, and meetings, and all sorts of stuff. And I don't have the solution to that. I don't know if you guys get more staff, more time, but there's a lot for you guys to take in. And I don't feel like you guys are fully knowledgeable of everything, just on my one single topic that I looked at. On this next topic, I'm not going to count against my time in protest. I've been here twice about the same protest, and so I'm going over my time because you guys are not following the laws, I refuse to follow the laws. I filed a complaint February of 2024, and I've followed it many times, after 60 days, the Title IX Coordinator said it was their mistake that they didn't refile the complaint, and it was then filed, but never got more contact. I filed many, many more times following up on that complaint. I filed to the Department of Education, and the Department of Education said, you can't do anything if there's no complaint investigated. If there's nothing to investigate, they can't do anything. And I went back and forth, the last time I reached out was September 2024. I reached out again, got no response, just stonewalled nothing. And then, just today, I was told that a report was sent to me. Well, it was sent, they just said it was sent, they didn't say who it was sent to. They said it was sent June of 2024. And I have a locked mailbox, I've checked all my mail, I go through every piece of junk mail. I did not miss the mail, I guarantee it was not sent to me. And I have every single email from Sacramento Unified School District for many years, and I guarantee I didn't delete the email. So they're implying that it was sent to me, which is a waste of my time, a waste of all of our time, because I'm here now talking about that. And in addition, I was in a courtroom with a principal from our district, and they had their IAS standing next to them, and they lied all so straight-faced to me with a very similar story, claiming that things were mailed to me, which were certainly not ever given to me. And so, that's disrespectful for everyone's time and our court, the time that the judge took to go through that. My main reason I came here is concapping, it's Concapping Week again, that's the whole reason I got involved, discriminatory enrollment and concapping, things like that. I brought up the-
Please wrap up your public comment.
Excuse me, what was that?
Please wrap up your public comment.
Yep, I'm wrapping it up. I could have lots of people here, but out of respect for their time and our time, I'm refusing again, I can explain again that you guys have wasted years of my life not responding to legal investigation reports. The concapping just went into effect, there are five schools that I've gone through, none of them had concapping, and they are mostly the whitest, richest schools in our district, and this is what I brought to you guys.
We have no more public comment.
Thank you, Brian. Moving on to our Consent Agenda. Anyone want to move our Consent Agenda? Rose, you have a second? I'll second. Still a roll call though.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayla?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Naharo?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, I got it, thank you.
All right, 9.0 Communications, we're gonna start with our Employee Organization Report, so, SCTA.
Good evening, I'm Nikki Davis-Milewski, President of Sacramento City Teachers Association. It's still only the first week of September, but it feels like we've been back a lot longer than that. We're glad to see the approval of our contract is finally on the Board Agenda, and while we know there was a delay in the district sending the AB 1200 report to SCOE, there's no excuse in SCOE's delay in providing its response. We assume that you probably received it earlier today, given that SCOE Superintendent Dave Gordon's years of inappropriate meddling in our financial affairs in this district. It doesn't take a crystal ball to anticipate the gloom and doom it is most certain to contain. If only Dave Gordon had provided this same level of scrutiny to Highland Charter School that we keep hearing about. The state would not be seeking the return of $180 million of questionable spending detailed in the joint legislative audit. It's important to know that Dave Gordon and his representatives were right here in this district every step of the way when Jorge Aguilar and Rose Ramos, when they submitted budget after budget claiming to be on the verge of insolvency, only to end the year with surplus after surplus. And we should not forget that Dave Gordon failed to discover Aguilar's failure to count five schools in the district's enrollment projections, and that Gordon remained silent after Aguilar finally disclosed the mistake to him. Dave Gordon stood by and watched while Aguilar still tried to lay off hundreds of educators. We appreciate the SUSD leadership rightfully establishing the independence of the district. And we look forward to the day when SCOE School Board will provide the same type of oversight and direction that you have provided here in SAC City Unified. And we are eager to begin to implement the improvements negotiated into our new contract. In anticipation of the new contract, we've already been working with HR to create a new contract to print that has everything all together in one place with all the new changes and the past, and also to update the salary schedules as we continue our joint efforts to recruit and retain teachers here in SAC City Unified. But going back to Highland Charter for a minute, that sorry story captures why authorizers like SUSD and SCOE need to provide strong oversight with the independent charters that operate within their jurisdiction. We appreciate the leadership that the district has demonstrated this in regard to St. Hope. And as we look here in the time we have remaining from SCTA's second Vice President Vanessa Kudubek and some of our St. Hope educators, St. Hope is back to its old tricks, bargaining in bad faith, unlawfully restraining staff from engaging in union activities, and making unlawful unilateral changes, and generally behaving like a bad anti-union employer. Less than one month into the school year, and the staff there are already starting to quit. You have the means to hold St. Hope accountable, and we hope that you exercise that power, and I will turn over the mic.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen, Board Members. It would be a disservice to the St. Hope educators and the students in their charge to sugarcoat what is happening at St. Hope. School has been in session for four weeks, and there are already teachers resigning. Many others are saying that if things don't change this year, they will follow. This isn't a new scenario, but a pattern. The average teacher at St. Hope has only been there for 1.1 years. As the representative of St. Hope educators, I've been meeting with the teachers each week, and the general consensus in our meetings is that they just want to enjoy the same rights and benefits that any other teacher in Sacramento has. Our bargaining team has attempted to work with St. Hope leadership, but there seems to be resistance at every single turn. What we ask of you as a Board is to use your authority to enforce meaningful oversight over St. Hope so that it can finally become a place where teachers and students can thrive and want to stay. As you already know, St. Hope teachers work about 500 hours more than SUSD teachers, and yet are paid only a fraction of what they make without the same health benefits. Rather than engage in good faith with our bargaining team to produce a competitive proposal, they have been yet again backtracking on proposals, trying to tie teacher pay to evaluations that are conducted by administrators who do not even have administrative credentials. Even more concerning is how St. Hope at every turn tries to limit teachers' ability to organize for positive change. I found it quite symbolic that right in time for Labor Day, when we celebrate and honor the contributions of unions, that the Superintendent of St. Hope decided to prohibit the wearing of SCTA shirts during the school day. Wearing shirts with union insignia is a commonplace event in SUSD and understood as a basic legally protected- protected right. St. Hope teachers just want to exercise those same rights. I have also encountered attempts to restrict my ability to visit SETA members at St. Hope, and the superintendent has even collected information said at our union meetings. Perhaps most concerning is the resistance to transparency. As a school that utilizes public money, they should respond to requests for information, not ignore them. For just one example, I have requested information related to concerns, multiple concerns brought to me about how special education is being implemented. I am still waiting. According to St. Hope Board, the St. Hope Board, they are searching now for a new superintendent, and they've paid an individual a retainer to the tune of 60K to begin that search. In order for St. Hope to be successful, we believe that the future leader should have an administrative credential, that they have experience working with labor partners, that they know how to respect basic labor laws, that they commit to improvements, and it should also be someone who does not have direct financial or personal ties to Kevin Johnson, who already handpicks the St. Hope Board. The teachers and students at St. Hope deserve better and request your support for improving accountability. And I want to present an ELA teacher and member of our bargaining team, Taya Kirshman, and she's going to share some more concerns that have been brought up by our St. Hope educators.
Hello, good evening. My name is Taya Kirshman. I'm an English teacher at SAC High. This is my second year as a teacher at SAC High, and I stand before you today to inform you about the poor working conditions of our teachers. We are being overworked and underpaid. I've had multiple teachers tell me that they have had to stay up past midnight multiple nights in a row to grade, to make lesson plans, and meet other St. Hope expectations. I myself have had to spend many hours off of the clock to meet these requirements for my job. Not only are we having to work many more hours than other Sacramento-area teachers, we also aren't getting paid as much for our efforts. Teachers are not able to pay their bills every month with their current salaries and the health insurance benefits offered. Our concerns are not being properly addressed by administration, and it feels like they don't truly care about our needs. For what, for that reason, I want to list some concerns my fellow teachers have requested that I bring to your attention, since St. Hope will not take proper action. SPED laws are not being properly followed. Staff without special education credentials are logging minutes. Physical education laws are not being followed. State law says students must be having rigorous physical activity for 400 hours every 10 days, and our PE teachers aren't even being allowed to take our students outside every day to meet that requirement. Teachers have to fight to get supplies, and there are not enough supplies for students. I know of at least four teachers who have quit these past four weeks due to the poor working conditions of St. Hope. With our current teacher turnover rate, I am the only veteran high school teacher for English, and I've only been there for one year. Many teachers will continue to leave if we cannot improve the working conditions. Our bargaining sessions have been very frustrating, and the bad faith bargaining, the backtracking from St. Hope, the St. Hope team, it's beyond frustrating for us. We ask for less hours and days of work to match the days and hours of SAC City teachers, and we get no proposal at all. We tell them that pay-for-performance is off the table. They try to keep it. Teachers are tired of this back and forth, and we need more accountability and oversight from you to ensure that St. Hope is respecting state and federal laws. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. SEIU? TCS? Teamsters and UPE. Okay, moving on to 9.2. I don't know whether there's feedback. 9.2 District Advisory Committee's Student Advisory Committee.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Lisa Allen and most elegantly, student board member Maggie Kemper. We are here on behalf of the Student Advisory Council to provide a status update on the current affairs of our council. To begin, my name is Owen Ngheva, and I am joined by Beza Gatahan and Jessica Torres. Also in support, we have Oliver Sue and Reed Wages. Firstly, I would like to extend a thank you on behalf of the students on the Advisory Council to Board Member Ibada for attending our first meeting on the 27th of August. Your participation and lasting involvement with our council means so much for our advocacy and our efforts as an official district committee. We feel such a strong sense of visibility by the board as a result of this. Further, we would like to express our deep interest and excitement to work with our board liaison this year. Cooperation on all levels is how we get community work done, and it is exactly how we serve our 40,000-plus students across the district with their diverse needs. Adding on, we would like to support all board members and youth affairs across their trustee areas this year. With that, I would like to welcome Beza Gatahan to speak about representation and diversity within the SAC.
I would like to take this opportunity to appreciate the diversity within the Student Advisory Council this year. With 19 students, two of whom are dispersed amongst eight high schools, CK McClatchy, George Washington Carver, Hiram Johnson, John F. Kennedy, Luther Burbank, Rosemont School of Engineering and Science, and West Campus High School. We aim to fix issues in our high schools and beyond, as well as make changes to positively benefit the student body across our district. Our council is composed of members from a wide range of cultural, academic, and personal backgrounds, making it a truly diverse group. It adequately represents the diversity and inclusion of not only the school district, but Sacramento as a whole, and we are extremely proud of that. Having a diversified council is very powerful, for it brings together different perspectives, calls us to learn from one another, and creates solutions that work for everyone. Now, I'm thrilled to welcome veteran member of the SAC, Jessica Torres, recapping our first meeting.
Throughout the duration of our first group meeting, we engaged in a variety of bonding and interactive activities to further our connection amongst each other. We all shared ideas and suggested potential focus areas for this school year, along with the importance of youth advocacy and participation. We also welcomed Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Erin Finley, Director of School Climate Daniel Rallary, Chief Communications Officer Brian Heap, and Manager of Community Engagement Nicole Kangas in regards to a potential academic calendar change. We engage in discussion, offering our opinions on the change, along with potential student and family considerations. Having the chance to be heard about our concerns with the potential change is highly appreciated, and we would love to continue to be consulted and furthermore collaborate with district officials about more changes that affect our youth in the near future. To close, I would like to thank the board, the superintendent, and the student board member for our time allotted to speak tonight. We would also like to acknowledge our hardworking advisor, Vanessa Reyes, for fostering this medium of youth-led grassroots advocacy in our beloved school district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Community Advisory Committee. District English Learner Advisory Committee. LCAP PAC. Black African-American Advisory Board. All right, Community Schools Advisory Committee. Yes, got one.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Allen. My name is Sarah Lynn Bianveneau, and I'm representing community schools. I'd like to start with the expanded and rich learning pillar and share about Lauren Almonte, Community School Specialist at Oak Ridge. She has taken the lead on the Project-Based Learning Initiative and has coordinated professional development for staff, facilitated planning sessions, and created opportunities for families to experience the finished projects by inviting them to student presentations and joining field trips. One example is the fifth-grade class project. After reading Esperanza Rising, students visited Soil Barn Farms, where they were able to make real-world connections to the novel and deepen their learning. In first grade, Lauren brought hands-on experiences with guide dogs and training to their PBL unit around accessibility. This initiative represents a deep dive into transformative student-centered learning designed to build agency in traditionally underserved populations. Family and community engagement continues to grow in leaps and bounds. The back-to-school pool party was a great success, with over 400 families attending. This event strengthened partnerships and families in our district. We even had one attendee say thank you. They've never had anybody do anything like this for them, which was very kind. On October 22nd, in partnership with FACE, Parent Teacher Home Visit, and Multilingual, we will host our first parent empowerment conference. This three-part series will focus on equipping parents and caregivers with the tools to step into leadership roles at both site and district levels. Parent leaders from across the committees will leak much of the content. Student Opportunities: On November 7th, 13, over 1,300 students will attend the UC Davis STEM Fair and Women's Basketball Opening Game. Eight schools are now partnered with USTA, which is providing pickleball equipment and lesson plans for our sites. Tonight, Rosa Parks is hosting the Cuts for Kids event. When I left that event to get here, there were over 40 attendees lined up to have haircuts by over 12 barbers and hairstylists that donated their time. The community schools team is rapidly building capacity and adding layers to the community school mindset at an incredible pace. Our partnerships continue to grow from local business donations at individual schools to large-scale grant writing that expands program and resources district-wide. Our community school specialists are growing together as a team, leveraging their individual strengths across all sites, from grant writing to community organizing, to create district initiatives that benefit every school, not just our 17 sites at this time. That's our hopes. To date, we have received $59,417 in donation and support for our initiatives. We are almost paying for ourselves. I have time left, so I'll say thank you for your support, and I know those CSAC positions will be filled soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, American Indian Education Program Parent Committee. All right, moving on to 9.3, Student Member Report.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Oh, it's special USAC. Hi, all. Welcome back. Just to start off, of course, a little shout-out to the SAC. You guys did great. Jessica, Beza, Owen, you guys killed it up here. In addition to what you guys so wonderfully said, the SAC has welcomed all of our new and returning members for the 2025 and 2026 school year, and so far, we've had a welcoming orientation and two official meetings. Luckily, just as Beza said, we have representation for eight of our 14 high schools, so that's always great. The SAC is always continuously pushing for more authentic representation so we can do our very best job serving our students. This year, similar to previous years, we will be following our YPAR formatting to tackle our problems. YPAR stands for Youth Participatory Action Research, and it's a model that young people use in order to identify current problems and develop research-driven solutions in order to foster more positive change. We'll continue using this in order to curate a student-led and student-centered atmosphere. On another note, just to give credit where credit is due, I want to re-think Board Member Ibada for her amazing job at being present, yet listening and accepting students' thoughts and opinions, and being able to take a step back. Listening is something that wholly reflects what makes you a great leader. So thank you once again, Board Member Ibada, and we'd be thrilled to have you come again. Of course, this offer is also extended to the rest of the board, and we'd be happy to have all and any of you at our meetings, which happen every Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:30. Moving on from SAC, though, I wanted to touch on how school has recently started, which it feels like it's been started for a while now. To help ease any students or families' worries, I know it can be stressful when school starts, I wanted to provide and highlight some available resources for students, and specifically seniors, too. First, we have our district college mentors, which are assigned by school site and can help seniors with post-secondary pursuits, and they've even helped me start my college essays. We also have an upcoming college and career fair, namely the HBCU College and Career Fair, which is being hosted at JFK on September 19th, if I'm sure. And lastly, but not least, there's also student support centers at our high school who are available to help support any and all students with any mental health crisis. So yeah, that's it for me. Thank you, guys. Good to be back.
Thank you. Moving on to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Last week, the Sacramento County Office of Education held a reception to honor the Teachers of the Year for their member districts. I was absolutely thrilled to be there as Derek Tahara, a third-grade teacher at David Lubin Elementary, was named the Teacher of the Year for all of Sacramento County. Congratulations, yes, Mr. Tahara. On behalf of the entire school district and our families, I want to say how proud and grateful we are to have you as part of our wonderful team. I also want to recognize and thank our Co-Teacher of the Year in SAC City Unified, Anda Robinson. She is a teacher at Mewoc Middle School and an inspiration to her colleagues and students. Well done, teachers. For my next announcement, I would like Mr. Ray Lozada. Could you please come forward and report to the dais, please?
He's finally in trouble.
No, no, no. Just you, sir.
This wouldn't be the first time she spoke to me like this.
All right. Ray?
I know, I'm sorry.
Are you ready? Okay. All right. Over the past five years, Ray, Ray has worked diligently to create and implement the vision of this Board of Education to reimagine school safety. This was a challenging and unenviable assignment, but also a necessary one to help our district create a safe and welcoming spaces for all students, while continuing to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline that has plagued communities of colors in the past. But Ray, I don't think we can keep using the term reimagine anymore, because not only have you and your team of safety officers made this groundbreaking work a reality, you have made it a model that other school districts want to follow. Your expertise as a former law enforcement officer and your skills as a collaborator and a relationship builder have been sought after by 30 school districts nationwide and even as far away as the United Kingdom. But Ray, you've really done it now, sir. We have just received word that the California School Boards Association has named Reimagining School Safety, or SAFE Schools, as a finalist for the CSBA Golden Bell Award for Positive School Climate and Safety. All of us in the district are proud of your work, Ray, and we are incredibly grateful for all that you do to keep our students and staff safe. We nominated you for this award, Ray, and didn't tell you, because we knew this was going to work. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Thank you, Ray. That's it.
That's it. I can leave.
You can't.
Do you want to speak, Ray? We're just going to do whatever we want up here, so go ahead and-
Well, you know, nothing happens without good leadership and the convictions, you know. I thank God for giving the glory for the guiding notion to serve and to call right right and wrong wrong. And I was telling folks of the day that I don't know that I would have took this position without school resource officers. We worked with them when we had them, and when they didn't, I seen the honor to do the work. But our now superintendent, it was just her and I for a while. We ran these ideas. I was always in her doorway. She never said no, and so I can't take that, this honor alone. It's a reflection of our leadership here at the district, and also with, you know, the unction of the board members who kind of drove us in this direction, and also the support that I get from you all, even now. So thank you so much. I heard the tone. I didn't know what to expect. I heard the tone, I didn't know what to expect, but, you know, we just, we just getting started, really. I think our best days are ahead, so thank you.
Ray, you got to come back up. Ray, you got to come back up. Come back, Ray. We don't have the power to actually call you up, but just, just come up. Go ahead, Mike. Actually, we do have the power to call you up, so...
Oh, man.
Sorry, man, I was going to let you sit down, but it's me, so I can't do that. I, I'm here partially because of Ray Lozada. I had the unique opportunity to serve under Ray in Safe Schools, right? And we always talk to ideas, and one thing that Ray does is he allows, he listens to understand instead of listening to respond. As much as he knows about what he's doing, he wants to always get your input, and that's for students, staff, whoever it is, and that's what makes how he does what he does, and it makes him special, and this is well-deserved. I'm up here when she's making the speech. I ain't cried since I was 10, and I'm up here almost tearing up, because if anyone deserves this, Ray, it's you. Yeah, 10. I lost a Little League game. But anyway, it's a long story, long story, oh, part Little League. But, 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 man, no one deserves this award more than you, and you got, you got my support, man, in anything you do, and, brother, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyways, I just want to say that there's so much emotion that goes into this, Ray, but, you know, our first actual interaction, right? You was ready to have me arrested. But wait, I share that because in the same sense, you made yourself accessible to me. And I, and I want to say that this evening, because that is why we do the work that we do, because it's okay, and I've said this before, we will be in situations where we agree to disagree, but you never stop doing what you were hired to do, and that's keeping people safe. And on top of that, you make yourself accessible to folks at the schools, and so it's just a statement of who you are as a person, but it is reiteration that I know my baby's safe at school, so thank you.
Honored to do so. I do remember that, too.
I got a keynote.
Yeah.
I, if no one else has comments, I'll make, I'll make a quick comment. I think, I got to say this generally, I think everyone knows how big of a critic I am of our systems and the systems that be, and you're in a position to help us prove that certain folks don't need to keep our kids safe, that certain folks don't need to be in those spaces, because we do listen to our students, right? There's many things that we, we do right, and there's many things that we probably do wrong as adults, but I know that the students spoke, I think you came in at a time where there's a reckoning in this nation, and there still continues to be that reckoning around how we keep our kids safe, how we keep our community safe, and your team does that, and I think your team proves that relationship-building, having real conversations with the kids, helping kids understand that the decision they might be making might not be the best one is actually how you stop bad things from happening. It doesn't mean you're going to stop every bad thing from happening, but approaching violence with violence is oftentimes the worst approach, and you showed us, and you showed this district and communities, and if there's 30 other people who want you, they can't take you, I mean, unless you want to go, but we don't want you to go, and we want to make sure that folks understand that this system isn't something that you're carrying with you, that you're hiding. It's very obvious what we're doing here at this district because of you, and if folks want to learn, they're welcome to come and find out how Sac City works, and they're welcome to learn from us, and I know that you have an open door for anyone who wants to improve school safety plans at their sites and make sure that they're spending money on their kids and not on the police. So thank you so much for everything that you do, truly.
Thank you so much.
Man, I don't know what I'm supposed to do on a president's report now, so I'll just make up some stuff real quick. We have 916 Day coming up, so I want to make sure that if folks want to get out there, work with our, shout-out to Nikki, work with our super cool Parks Commissioners and our city staff, and even some of our board members, who I'm sure many of us will be at one of those three events. I don't have a flyer here, but I'm sure we'll put out a flyer from the district side. I will be at Miller Park on the 20th, and I'm sure a lot of us will be at other locations, so it would just be good to see you all out there, students, families, staff, kind of work together and find ways to improve our spaces. The only other update I really have from my end is just, I'm just looking forward to having a good year. I hear a lot of unfortunate situations with how people are feeling, what they're facing on this district. I think I want to be open about the idea that we are trying to be responsive, and there are things that we know that we need to fix. I kind of, it's weird, it's not like a New Year's resolution, because New Year's resolutions happen in January, but this is the start of a new school year, so maybe this is my new school year resolution, but we, we're doing the work, and part of doing the work is accepting where you can do something better, and I am holding myself accountable to know that if there's ways that I can show up better, if there's ways that I can show up for our board members better, for our staff better, you all let me know. I'm happy to talk to anyone at any time, and I enjoy the conversations, all jokes aside, that I have with every single committee member, every single staff member. So, we can do this, and I just want to encourage folks, I know that we're talking about enrollment issues and other stuff, I have spoken to multiple families who have made the switch from the, from the private school system to our public school system in my community and my neighborhoods, and that's what I want to make sure that we continue to do, because all these conversations about enrollment and other things really have to include community members who just don't know how great this district is and don't know how much we have truly turned things around. So your support is what's really getting us to that point where our collaborative conversations are reaching, helping us reach new heights here. So I just want to give that positive affirmation that there's things that we can do better, but I really do appreciate the amount of work that we are putting in, and also shout-out to SAC, because you guys get a lot of love, but honestly, I think we, I hear you, so I'll make my public commitment to show up at the next meeting. Maybe not the exact next meeting, because you have me every week, so a meeting within the next three weeks. Hey, hey, hold me accountable, it's okay, hold me accountable. That's it. I did text April, I have two minutes. I did text April, but April, April's phone is different. So I said, I had the text, I was like, April, are you going to the SA meeting? Let me know, and I never got a response back, so that was my, that's it. I'm just happy to be back, I wasn't here last month, so, that's it, I'm done. Who wants to go next? Member Jean.
All right, I have an update from our policy committee. We met a couple of weeks ago and began reviewing some of the policies that our internal staff and legal have been looking at and working with, especially with our Black Parallel School Board and whatnot, so I just wanted to let the board know that policy will be coming your way, which means a lot more reading, just an FYI. The policy committee is going through it more specifically and detailed, so feel free to reach out to myself, Taylor, or just Jean with any questions that you have on that. Most specifically, though, because we've been having a lot of conversations around how we better support our board committees, especially when we've got three that we are appointing, and how does the makeup of the committee work, and who's appointed, and how do we make sure there's representation, the, the recommendation from staff and legal was that we consider actually putting it into our board policy around how the committees need to work. So we are working on that language, and our intent slash promise is that it will actually be ready for you in two weeks, and that we are recommending that we postpone doing appointments to those committees until that policy is in place. That way, everybody can be really confident about why we are choosing as we are in the deliberate that we are doing, and we do apologize for the two-week delay, but we do want to do, go slow to go fast. So that's why appointments will not be announced tonight, but they will be announced in two weeks after that policy adoption.
Thank you, Member Jean. Member Kada.
I thought Mike was in front of me. All right. So as we begin a new school year, I would like to celebrate fresh beginnings with some recent big wins in our district. It has been wonderful to see students' faces light up as they step back on campus to reunite with friends and to make new ones. I've seen that same energy on the faces of our teachers and staff as they prepare for another year of guiding our future leaders through their education. This summer, we opened three brand-new schools, an incredible investment by and in our community. I visited Oak Ridge just before it opened, and the excitement was undeniable. I also look forward to seeing Sezor Chavez and Nicholas soon. In my trustee area, in Greenhaven Pocket, South End Park area, I've toured replanted fields, refreshed buildings, brand-new athletic facilities, safety upgrades, and much more. To our partners in the trades, our district staff, and to the voters who made this possible by supporting our bonds, I thank you very much. But not everything is a celebration at this time of year. We need to talk about enrollment. Families have shared their enrollment challenges with us here tonight and over the summer, as they do every year and throughout the year. Their stories remind us that this isn't about numbers, it's about children. All too often, our system treats our kids like budget-line items and student ID numbers instead of the unique individuals they are with unique individual needs. The truth is, our enrollment system and timelines too often fail our families. While initial enrollment for students has improved, and I thank staff for that hard work, navigating the process still feels like a maze. Too many families feel that they need a mentor just to get through it. That should not be the case. Our open enrollment process is opaque and full of rules that act as traps for the unwary. Why can't open enrollment and the strategic permits work together to give families more flexibility if the first plan falls through? Why don't we extend the open enrollment window into the first few weeks of school when we're still determining actual enrollment numbers? And why, most importantly, is our leveling, also known as concapping process, still done in a way that is so harmful to our students, disrupting their classrooms and relationships just weeks into the school year? This is harmful and it is wrong. I know the answers to these problems are not simple. Changing leveling, for example, raises tough questions about cost, staffing, and equity, but here's the truth: complexity is no excuse for inaction. So here's my commitment: This year, throughout the year, fixing enrollment will be a top priority of mine, alongside my ongoing commitment to continue pushing for better outcomes for students with disabilities, because a stool system that doesn't work for every student doesn't work for any student. And I want to be clear: As a board, we have started this work. We've established board committees, as Member Jean just mentioned, to tackle these challenges as well as others, but there's a lot more work in front of us than there is behind us. The new school year is a time of joy and a reminder of the work ahead. I look forward to continuing to partner with my colleagues, staff, and our community to keep this district moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kada. Anyone else? Oh, Member, okay, Member Navarro.
Sorry, okay. No? Yeah? Oh, I thought you said Ibada.
Sounds kind of similar. So I just want to recognize the Rosemont High School community for winning the attendance championship last June, and they did it even though, even though they had a lot of seniors, they were able to overcome senioritis, and I just want to recognize the entire community and the staff. So they have the, the Rosemont, Rosemont has the championship belt. I am not sure when the rest, next revaluation for that is, but I just want to recognize the staff and the entire community for, for taking that title in June. So I guess we're doing that every month? It's a monthly, it's a monthly thing.
I'm really excited you chose one school.
They won the championship in June, in June. I don't know who won it.
Okay, go ahead.
We have to get done.
Yes.
Okay, lots of exciting stuff since the last meeting that we had, but I just wanted to highlight the reopening of the schools. I was able to attend two of the three, and the experience was not what I expected. It was very joyous to see so many families excited about this, but for me, it was more so of a testament of the hard work ahead, because buildings are beautiful and new and state-of-the-art, and that's all cool and stuff, but it's just a reminder that they're just facilities, and really, it's the work that we do. And where I tie that to is the very first student advisory council meeting that I went to, I was able to see some staff there presenting some things to the, to the students and kind of getting their feedback, but just to be in that space and see how there was like a cross-section of staff from different departments who do completely different things, but they were all there and really just in the moment with the kids, listening to their concerns, sharing, there was back-and-forth conversation, and I just want to invite everyone, in every department, to look for an opportunity to open the space, because our kids are so full of ideas, and they're truly the experts of the situations that they come from before they walk into the schools. And so the more we expose ourselves to them, it reminds us of why we do the work, but also it's, it makes our jobs easier, because we're hearing directly from the mouths of them, right? Like what, what their needs are and how do we find the balance? So just inviting everyone to take that opportunity. Also, lots of great stuff that I'm hearing from our community schools partnerships with the FACE Department. I think that's really an awesome thing that you all established once we were able to get community schools up and running, but also just highlighting to really stay tapped in to what's going on in our FACE Department. We have lots of different things happening throughout the year, and I'm going to tie that to the CAC meeting, the very first CAC meeting that I attended this year. There was a lot of talk around wanting registration to go up, but in that conversation, they talked about engaging families in general. And so just looking at how also, as a board and as staff, we're supporting what's going on with CAC and when, when they have meetings and events coming up that we're sharing that information out, because special education is often talked about in various spaces or even here about the things that we can get better at, but I want to really talk about how we're, there are some things we're doing good, and one of them is really opening that space for CAC to tell us their needs, and so I hope that as a board, we can really hone into that, taking some of that responsibility of just getting the information out. One of the problems that was raised, and I think it's important to share with you all as a board, is just the communication, not being able to record those, previously, we were able to have those recorded reminder calls. I don't know what changes were made, but there's something that happened that now that they can't be made. I don't like robo-calls, I'm going to be really honest with everybody that's listening and paying attention. Use your voice if you can, that's just my opinion, but if we can figure out how to make that more accessible to our committees so that they can get that information out, that's one of many forms of getting the information out there, but there's a barrier that has been consistent, so we want to remove that barrier however we can, I don't know when we can address it, but yeah, that's all I have.
All right. With the 25 seconds that we have left, I should announce real quick that earlier, we were talking about addressing some of the issues around one of our charter schools, St. Hope, and I just want to say that this board had decided that we would assign one of our board members to kind of move that conversation forward, so I'm excited to announce that. Member Benjamin, you have been tapped to take the lead on that. As someone who went to Sac Hi, where St. Hope now sits, from the location standpoint, I want to make sure that you are able to speak to your community and be in the position to really help us move forward with these conversations. So excited to hear from you on how we get through some of these conversations, but thank you. All right, moving on to the special presentations, 10.1, something we've just talked about, opening of schools.
Hello, Brian. Good evening, board members. My name is Brian Heap, and I'm proud to serve as the Chief Communications Officer for the Sac City Unified School District. And as you mentioned, President Singh, it is, this is the presentation that we enjoy so much every year, the opening of our schools. There is a lot of work, as you all know, that goes on behind the scenes to prepare our schools and get them ready for that August 18th opening that we just had a few days ago. So before we begin tonight, we'll remind everyone that we're grounding our presentation this evening in our core value and our Sac City Unified guiding principle. Here's an overview of the different areas we're going to focus on: construction, professional learning, staffing and enrollment, expanded learning, student support and health services, as well as nutrition services, safety, and communications. And this is an example of just... And this is an example of just one of the many wonderful scenes that we saw throughout the school district on, back on August 18. And a lot of that has to do with our first speaker, which is Chris Ralston, and our facilities team.
Good evening, President Singh, Superintendent Allen, members of the board. It's been a busy summer for us in the Facilities and Support Division. We started the summer with two groundbreakings to begin two-year modernizations of Fern Bacon Middle School and Pacific Elementary School. Those projects are now in action. We also celebrated three new school modernization and rebuilds at Chavez, Nicholas, and Oak Ridge. Communications threw an amazing party to make sure the community felt welcome to their new schools and got to look around. Those projects still have some work to be done, but we couldn't start until the building was emptied to do those demos, and we hope that those projects will be done by the end of October. Our maintenance and operations teams did several projects in-house that saves us thousands in dollars in previously contracted work and completed almost 4,000 work orders this summer. Providing a great scrubbing of the schools is certainly a labor of love, and the exciting result is what motivates our great custodial teams when the students arrive on August 18. Transportation began the school year with picking up about 1,600 students for their first days on 72 routes. Thirty-four students received one-on-one rides from a contracted service. Two-hundred-and-seventeen Pacific Elementary students used a bus for the first time as we provide transportation to CB Wire during their school's construction. That department also hired four new bus drivers since the start of summer and hope to finish the hiring process of seven additional folks soon. The new EV buses have been received, and they are going through the CHP certification process that we believe will be done this month. On behalf of the more than 400 employees I am representing here this evening, we thank you for allowing us to be part of all this excitement. I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Erin Finley.
Thank you, Chris, and good evening. I have the pleasure of sharing our efforts to support our educators as we began the school year this year through professional learning. So we began with our site administrator team pre-service, which included our principals, assistant principals, and site instruction coordinators. They all, many of the departments that are standing here tonight, this evening, also provided department updates for them on information that they need to know to start the school year, and they also participated in instructional leadership planning with our IAS team. We then moved on to certificated pre-service, where we did one day of district-wide professional learning. We had a keynote kickoff with Superintendent Allen and SETA President Nikki Davis-Milevsky, followed by a keynote address with Dr. Michelle Sedrina-Pleger, who also did our keynote last year. We then did a session on inclusive learning environments, an interactive webinar, and then another on restorative practices, and the feedback from all of those was pretty fantastic. We had 90 to 95% positive ratings from all of our participants in all three of those. Our teachers also participated in site-based collaboration and prep and had an allocated day for mandated training. We provided MTSS, proof-of-concept launch. You'll be hearing a little update about that earlier. We had more than 200 of our MTSS site staff and admin together to prepare and launch for the proof-of-concept work. We also trained all of our 80-plus reading intervention teachers prior to the school year starting, so that they, they came in prepped and ready to roll in preparing our students to read. And lastly, we have done a lot of work in the Curriculum and Instruction Department around providing support in content areas, culture and climate, and culminated, common and mandated assessment resources with lots more to come this year. And I get to hand this over to Jake Hanson for a staffing update.
Good evening. We are proud to announce from our Human Resources Department that we started the school year with the lowest amount of classroom vacancies that we've had in years. You can see a comparison on the slide from last year to this year with an increase of certificated FTE of 102, yet still starting with about half of the classroom vacancies that we've had last year, and that's a, that's a continuous trend that we've had in previous years as well. So we, we did have some classroom vacancies, but we also worked really hard to have our substitute certificated subs pool built and strong, and so every student had a teacher on the first day of school. We can't say that every year, so we are very proud to stand here today to be able to share that with you. HR, to get to that, we have had a focus on ongoing improvement and a focus on a goal with supporting our students and families. And these things that you'll see on the slider, the pieces that are getting there through our different sections of Human Resources to reach those goals. We have some new and exciting things coming with the ongoing, ongoing improvement, and we will be coming back to share that with you as well. So thank you.
Good evening, board member and superintendent. For the 25-26 school year, as of September 2, sorry, our, our enrollment for the district with 37,439 students, and the last year's enrollment at this time was 37,431 students. Enrollment is continuously monitored as well as updated as we are enrolling new students daily. The Enrollment Center has online registration for grades TK through 12, available 24 hours, seven days a week via our website. Once a parent submits their application, a email is sent to them immediately regarding confirming their submission. Our Enrollment Center, as well as our MOOC center hours, are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. We have in-person support during that time. We also have kiosks, we have scanners, and we have printers. We also have language support of Spanish, Russian, Ukraine, Vietnamese, Chinese, Cantonese, Mandarin, Mong, Farsi, Dari, and Pashto.
Hello, board members and superintendent. Manpreet, Director, Youth Development Support Services. So we started at all of our 72 sites from day one, and you can see all of TK Kinder Program before school and all of the other after-school programs. And I want to say thank you to all the departments who came and trained our program managers and assistant program managers, and some of them are standing here, Safe Schools Office, Student Support and Health Services, Nutrition Facilities and Operations, I would like to mention, and number of students enrolled. So as of today, this morning, we have 10,501 students currently attending the programs, in the programs. So do we have waitlists? Yes. We have 143 for before school. TK and Kinder, we have 275 students on the waitlist, and for after-school, we have 1,211 students on the waitlist. So total students who are on the waitlist are 1,629. Services for specialized youth have started, SEC, Native Youth, other leadership programs, student ambassadors. We will again have 100-plus students who will be working in expanded learning, our high school students. For enrichment, we have Studio T, NorCal, and all those providers who do dance, music, arts, theater. Yes, this is an opening of the schools' presentations, but we never left. We never closed. So a few things I do want to highlight: summer went very well. We served 6,000-plus students, and we took 115 total trips within those 24 days. 115 trips just in elementary schools. We did not do field trips in middle and high schools, so that is just elementary numbers. We had almost 500 teachers plus working in the programs, classified staff, and then other staff working in the programs. Now, attendance recovery, what is it? This is something new. I'm sure you may have heard about it. So now, according to the new legislation, we, as a district, can recover ADA or do attendance recovery during expanded learning hours. No, go ahead. During expanded learning hours. This attendance recovery can happen only in the increment of hours or days, like one hour each day or the whole day? How many minutes students are supposed to have? We can generate 10 days of ADA per student. We cannot generate more than 10 days, up to 10 days. Now, where are we? I do want to say thank you to some of the departments who are helping, such as tech services, who are helping us to start this program. Our objective is to start from September 15. We will be piloting at some sites. I'm sure there will be some hiccups that we have to fix, because this is something new. And I'm hoping that this will be something positive for our students, because one other thing, attendance recovery can only happen under the supervision of a certificated staff and need to be aligned academic, academic standards. So we are working on all this, and we will bring the more updates. Okay? And now I would like to invite Director of Health Services.
Good evening. My name is Noel Estacio. I'm the Director of Health Services. So our Health Services team worked tirelessly this summer to ensure a smooth transition into the new school year and safely welcome all students back to school. Nurses provided medical interventions and support, such as coordinating direct care for 53 diabetic students. They updated 1,148 care plans for students with medical conditions. The immunization clinic provided vaccines to 342 students. And we distributed emergency medications and equipment at 76 school sites. And to ensure that school staff are prepared to address a medical emergency on campus, nurses provided emergency procedures training for over 2,000 certificated staff, expanded learning providers, and for the first time this year, we partnered with the Transportation Department to train bus drivers. Additionally, the department provided 419 TB risk assessments for new hires and current staff, and we also welcomed 10 new health aides and three new nurses to the team. Pass it off to Liz Sterba.
Good evening. Liz Sterba, Director, Student Support Services. First of all, in our foster youth services program, there were specialized events and support provided to our students that are in the foster care system, including providing school supplies and basic needs items, as well as specialized enrollment support for those families. The foster youth services program also houses our tobacco use prevention education program, and they have already booked their vaping presentations for school sites. They're preparing to ramp up for our California Healthy Kids Survey implementation this fall, and they also did back-to-school support at school sites. In the student support services world, we prepared safe welcoming student support center spaces at our schools, supported specialized enrollment needs and back-to-school needs for 140 students that are currently experiencing homelessness. We developed a robust handbook for GSA advisors that are supporting our LGBTQ-plus students, and we updated, distributed, and are continuing to train staff and expanded learning staff on our mental health crisis response and recovery procedures, as well as our suicide risk assessment procedures.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to update you on nutrition services and the opening of schools. Oh gee, right at the end here. What happened? There it is. I want to first start off by thanking Chris Ralston and the construction team in the Facilities Department for really helping us realize our vision for our new central kitchen restaurants at the school sites. I know you've all been out to the new schools, but if you haven't been to Luther Burbank, they also got a beautiful remodel, and that was funded by KIT funds, Kitchen and Infrastructure Training Funds, a grant that we received. We got word that we will receive another round of funding, so we are hoping to do the same next summer at John F. Kennedy Cafeteria. I also want to give some updates on the central kitchen. In the first two weeks of school, we prepared 50% of our menu scratch-made. That is up from 35% last year with the same number of staff, just being more thoughtful about the types of things we put on the menu and what we can operationalize at the school sites. You will see here, that was 250,000 scratch-made servings in the first two weeks of school. We estimate we will do about 7 million scratch-made meals this school year. There are several items there. I will tell you, I couldn't believe it when yellow curry hit the menu, and the kids loved it. We served chicken curry and also tofu curry. Some of the other favorites were the fresh peak of the guyo, the chicken chili verde, and the carne asada walking taco. For us, our goal this year is that we want our students to see themselves in the food at school. And we're going to continue on this path, and we're super excited about what's to come. In 2020, we opened that central kitchen, and I said it'll take three to five years. Didn't know that the pandemic would put us a little bit behind, but it's year five, and we're there. So I'm super proud of my team, and I'm going to introduce Ray Lazado. He is next from Safe Schools.
Thank you. All right. Well, I get a chance to really talk about where the rubber hits the road. You know, this last June, we rolled into what we're calling Phase Four, since we've, the progression of this whole process. This is kind of the new realignment that we have. It was definitely, it definitely makes sense to line up the Center of Security, along with our district security officers, in addition to the work that we're already doing. It gives us, extends our capacity to really be able to just go beyond school hours and to, you know, to extend our safety approach around the clock. So in that restructure, we ended up with, we had the opportunity to bring together our lead campus supervisors and safety officers that are normally allocated to the school sites, in addition with our district-led team. It was a phenomenal opportunity to really build some camaraderie and to get on the same page with our staff that are at school sites, and helping them to understand how to observe behavior, address behavior, and make referrals, so that we can intervene on, on, you know, on situations that are escalating. So we, a few of the curriculums, we trained on Crisis Prevention Institute, Youth Mental Health First Aid. We had to talk about some of the violence that's happening in specifically our Meadowview area as it relates to school-aged youth. And then we spent a lot of time the second day having a conversation about what do we do about it, the intervention and prevention in, in working with our, with our students. So this is a picture, actually. We collaborate with our community partners. Our, our gang and prevention training happened at the Rose family. Ms. Jackie's phenomenal, just in the work that she does, the reach that she has with our families in, in, you know, here in Meadowview in South Sacramento. And she's just got a huge heart. I mean, we know how much, how intertwined she is in the work that goes around here, but it was great to get us all together with her staff and to get on the same page on how we are going to respond to violence and crime prevention. The other thing I would highlight is, you know, this summer, we had the opportunity to get together, it was the most time that we spent with the, it was elementary, middle school, and our high school principals. I had two hours with each one. I was one of them. My feet were hurting for so long, I said I hadn't stood for six hours in a long time. But it was a great opportunity to, to have conversations and to communicate and to kind of vision-cast of what it is we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, this, going into this school year, definitely the most momentum we've had, and looking forward to just how far, you know, we can reach and what type of impact we can have.
I promise I'm the last one, board. So we came to you, you might recall, back in May, we told you that we were preparing to launch the brand-new scusd.edu website, and we did so quite successfully in early August. And the response that we have received, I think, from both our staff and from our families has been all overwhelmingly positive. They, they love the way it looks, they love the user-friendly aspects of it. It also was helpful, I think, for us to really kind of piggyback off of the success that we had had with Parent Square in terms of outreach to our community and being a little bit more accessible in that way. You'll see that when you check out the new website, there are some amazing accessibility features as well that make us much more ADA compliant and, which is a really good thing. You'll also see that we were out at the beginning of opening of schools, along with Crispin and Superintendent Allen, and we also had a lot of very positive media And we also had a lot of very positive media coverage, which is always really nice to get positive media coverage, especially around the great reopening events that we had at Cesar Chavez, as well as Oak Ridge, and also at Nicholas. Thank you, sorry. And a big thank you to Chris and the Facilities Team for the collaboration that we had with them in making those reopening celebrations happen. They were a lot of fun for the community and I think they were very, very well received as well. So with that, we are done.
Thank you. Public comment. Go ahead, Member Jean.
I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you and to all of the people that you work with for everything you do for our 37,000 kiddos. This presentation and the work that you're doing really demonstrates our commitment to the whole child, that every kiddo that comes to us, it's about keeping them safe, making sure they're in facilities that they can be excited about. And we're working on doing that on every campus, giving them amazing food that they're reflected in. I just loved that. That was beautiful. Working in our enrollment centers and our communication centers so that families and parents are able to access, making sure that we're taking care of the needs of the students that don't always get seen in our system and that need that outreach. And supporting all of our staff, our professional development, so that we can be even better at what we're doing and making sure every student has a teacher. Like, it's just absolutely incredible. So thank you to each and every one of you and your folks for taking care of the whole child of our students.
Thank you. Member Caden.
So I do agree with 100% of that. I do definitely want to uplift all the work that has been done and continues to be done in this district. And it's been really great to watch. I do have a few questions related to expanded learning that I'm hoping you can help me with. So I will preface this by saying I've been getting a lot of parents reaching out to me that they are still on the waitlist for these primarily after-school programs, but also the other programs. If my, if I wrote down your numbers correctly, seems like about 13% of kids who want to be in an expanded learning program are not in it yet. You know, in the most constructive way that I want to fix this, but it's a little disappointing because we made promises to families last year, especially around the discussion we had about closing different options. We said, well, it's not a problem to close that, the paid programs I'm referring to, because we have these free programs. And yet, you know, the message we're getting is, well, you don't really have them. It's another promise that this district has broken to families. And I think a lot of families understand that we're expanding programs. It's new. It's dynamic. So, okay, maybe one week we can figure it out. Maybe someone's going to work from home this week. And, or, you know, maybe grandma's just going to come stay at the house this week. But we're almost to the end of three weeks in. And, you know, 13% of kids who, families think that they need to be at school afterwards, primarily for most of these families, you know, because they're working and they can't pick them up. I guess, you know, I'm just asking, how did this happen? And how can we avoid it next year? And when can we, when can families expect that they'll come off the waitlist this year?
So I do want to say that as our application is continuously open, it stays open. So few students are, everyday students are enrolling based on the needs. We are working with our principals on the space. Once space becomes available, then we ask agencies to hire more staff and enroll students. I go meet with principals every day and ask them, like, we need more space. You have this many students on the waitlist. I work with other departments. So we are working on it, but letting you know, like, when we will be able to clear the waitlist. One, we don't think we will be ever able to clear the whole waitlist because the application is continuously open. So we take students as they come. But all I can tell you that we are putting our best efforts in there to make sure space is there and then we hire staff. We have hired more agencies. We are now doing PDMs for certificated staff. We are doing PDMs for classified staff. We have asked if instructional aides, our district instructional aides wants to work in expanded learning, we are providing ours. Teachers, we already are processing their PDMs. So I'm hoping that soon these waitlists will go down. But when, I don't think I can answer that question, but our efforts are in there to clear the waitlist as soon as possible.
Do we have any options for waitlists that aren't clearing to have students attend vacancies at other programs? So for example, Matiama, for example, has a waitlist and that's the one I'm mostly hearing about. Kids who enrolled, not continuously, but they enrolled last year. And then they got an email like the day before school started saying, you have no date. Can we bring them to another school? Can they go to MLK? Can they, I mean, can we bust them over until we can figure this out? So that...
No, thank you for asking that question. I can definitely talk to Transportation Services. And then if we can see if we can bust students. But Transportation Services, they are limited too. Like, we are currently working with them for Fern Bacon because Fern Bacon students are attending Will Seabird and students have a hard time going back to their homes. So we are working with Transportation and asking them to provide a bus. Definitely, I can check with Transportation and see where we are. And if they have capacity, I'll work on that.
Okay. And it's not just Transportation. I'm concerned, it's, you know, I've talked to families where, even if there's the option that they'll take off work, go get their kid, bring him somewhere else, and then go back to work and then get him three hours later, that's still better than, I think, what we have now for a lot of families. So it just, I just want to have options out there because again, I really do feel it's hard to kind of have those conversations where it's like, I, three months ago, I was talking to people about the paid programs and I told them to their face, like, no, 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 we've got this. And it's just...
So I hear your concern. I fully understand. And we are going to do our best to clear the waitlist. But many factors are involved in there, as I told you, space, staffing, a lot of things. So we can definitely provide the update to the board after two weeks and let you know where we stand.
Okay. Thank you. And I hope that was helpful. Really, I understand you're doing amazing work. And I do want to leave on a positive note with the after-school or the Summer Matters field trips were absolutely out of the park this year. Really well-run, available to all students. It wasn't just here and there. And I got a really lot of great comments on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Member Benjamin.
I had a question and a comment for expanded learning as well, which is, I heard you mention something about new legislation that allows ELOP dollars to be used to go out for attendance, right? And so can you just go over that briefly a little bit and just, yeah?
So according to the new legislation, because we, chronic absenteeism so high after COVID, students are being absent. So what, under this new legislation, we can use expanded learning opportunities dollars. And in before school and after school, let's say I'm a student. I was absent for five days and now I'm back. I can go to my teacher, if teacher is, and it's all voluntary. For teachers, it's voluntary to work in expanded learning. For students, it's voluntary to do the attendance recovery. So students and teacher meet one hour each day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday collaboration time, or Friday one hour. Then, after four hours of my meeting time and getting instruction from the teacher, district can generate ADA for one day. I'm just giving you an example because let's say 240 minutes is one day, then 60, 60, 60. So then we can generate ADA. We can only generate 10 days for each student. If I am absent for 12 days, district can only generate 10 days of ADA on me. So, but it has to happen in either before school, after school, intercessions, or summertime. So, or we can also do on Saturday and Sundays. And this needs to happen in the increment of hours, like 60, 60, 60 minutes. If teacher is with me for one hour 30 minutes, we can only count it one hour. So it's a great opportunity, yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This question is not from Unbriefed. I have a question about enrollment real quick. And my enrollment question is just, I'm sure you heard earlier. I just want to know how, are we truly behind early with some of these folks are saying that they are waiting to get their kid into school? Do we have a number on how many applications are still left to kind of get through or process?
Right. Good question. So we are, we are currently, currently, current with our processing of applications. We do have a lot of families that we have reached out to that are pending documentation, that we are waiting for them to respond to us with, if it's missing an ID or if it's an address verification or if it's shop records, things of that nature. A lot of time, our email gets lost in their spam or it gets lost in their junk mail where they just miss it. And that is taken as we're not reaching out to them. But we are currently current with our enrollment processes. We are working on September 1st with our enrollment as of now of applications that were submitted on September 1st.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Seeing now their comments, thank you so much, everybody. All right. 10.2 Suicide Prevention Awareness Month Recognition.
Hello again. President Singh, Superintendent Allen, Board. Thank you for giving us just a few moments to highlight September's Suicide Prevention Recovery Month. My name is Liz Sturba, Director of Student Support Services. I'm here with my colleagues Noel Estacio, Director of Health Services, and school nurse Nali Hines. Of course, we start with grounding in our core value and guiding principle and moving on just straight to the facts about suicide. Someone dies by suicide in our country every 11 minutes. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for youth ages 10 to 24. Our LGBTQ+ identified youth have a higher prevalence of suicidal thoughts and behavior. And getting a little closer to home, nearly 1 in 5 Sacramento County 9th and 11th graders have seriously considered suicide. Heavy. What's really important to know is that suicide is preventable. And we're going to talk to you a little bit about how we're doing that here in Sat City and how each of you can be a part of that as well.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right. So our department is proud to lead Sat City's suicide prevention work. We developed suicide risk assessment procedures. And annually, we train and support school counselors, nurses, psychologists, social workers, and ERM's clinicians on district-approved suicide risk assessment tools. And in '24, '25, we completed over 500 risk assessments. And new in '25, '26, there will be office hours to support staff who are doing the assessments. And also, we expanded prevention efforts by providing youth mental health first aid training for our classified staff because they are such an essential part of our team and they are often the people who have the most contact with our students. And then, so I've done, so this is sort of notes from the field. I've done many of these suicide risk assessments and on some students as young as 3rd grade. And some of my colleagues have done suicide risk assessments with students as young as kindergarten. And since the pandemic, the number of students we screen have noticeably increased. While screening is a really vital first step, the follow-up remains to be sort of the critical piece of the process. Students, a lot of times, you would think the assessment would be the most difficult part, and it's not. Our students are sometimes so relieved and just really want to talk to somebody about their struggles. The hard part comes in that conversation is, they always ask me, are you going to tell my parents? And you know what? I always have to say, yeah, I'll have to call your parents because I really want to get you some help so you can feel better. And those conversations can be very difficult, as you can imagine, because, especially when we have cultural and family beliefs that do not fully recognize health, mental health needs. And I get to bridge, although it's a really difficult conversation, I get to bridge this gap between the students, the parents, and resources. And while it's difficult, it's also the most rewarding part because it ensures that our students get the help that they need.
So anyone can prevent suicide. All of us can support a student. It's really about knowing the signs. You know, that sudden loss and change in mood, in their personality, someone giving away their personal belongings, withdrawal, changes in appetite and sleep. So it's really important if someone is, you're concerned about someone, talk to them. Find those words. There are resources that are available that if you would like to speak to somebody that you're concerned about, and you can go to suicidespreventable.org. The most important thing too is that if someone is in imminent danger, that you call 911 and to keep them safe. There are suicide prevention hotlines that you can call or text. And there's also support in Spanish. So thank you for giving us the time to bring forward this really important topic. And thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Brian, do we have any public comment?
We do have one speaker. We have Alaya Bassam.
Thank you very much. I'll be quick this time. The San Diego Promise did anonymous tip line and on a limited number of schools and time period, they had over 1,000, what they think was documented, suicide preventions. And in our district, I had firsthand experience where we one time put out the see-something, say-something notice, but we don't have anonymous tip line. And our older schools sent out contradictory advice to all of their parents that children are, it's not age-appropriate for them to see-something, say-something, and that we shouldn't be talking about that to our children. And then also, I'm sorry, I don't remember about this. There was a public comment one time of a teacher retaliating against a kid who tried to make anonymous thing in the classroom, which you could email me if you don't remember that one. But I think it might, the professionals tell me an anonymous tip line would be a way that lots of children would reach out effectively to help their peers with their age-appropriate communication. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board comments, discussions? I will just really quickly say something that is pointing out to me already is our student board member is out there somewhere. But just hoping that we can continue to collaborate with our SEC. I'm sure you guys already are. And, you know, just calling to the fact that we have, I just appreciate the level of work that everyone's putting in, especially for LGBTQIA+ students. I know this district has been at the forefront of that support and I know that your staff and your team have been doing great work around that too. And that plays a huge role into the conversations around suicide prevention, is making sure kids feel safe. And that feeling of safety is just the most important thing when you're on campus. So thank you for the work you do. All right. Moving on to 10.3. I matter, I show up, and I care. I love these shirts. I do have them. I have mine. I can't speak for everyone else.
We'll bring them next time. I thought everyone did. I know you have. Do you have one from the event?
Not that one.
Not this one. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll give you that one.
Let's get on that one.
We'll walk over. We'll bring them over tonight. We'll bring them over tonight. You guys ready? Good evening, Board President Singh, members of the Board, Superintendent Allen, I haven't seen you in a while, Cabinet and Community. Thank you for the opportunity to share this year's update on the LC SSP on the LCSSP Grant, Learning Communities for School Success Program, and the work of our Office of Student Attendance and Engagement. My name is Jennifer Crutchman, and I am the Director of Student Attendance and Engagement. And I am joined tonight by Sandra Laird and Miranda Bredesen, both from my team. Tonight's update will highlight the measurable progress we're seeing thanks to this grant, our MTSS-aligned programming, and our growing district-wide attendance initiatives. Hold on. There we go. Our attendance work is rooted in SAC City's core belief that we must interrupt systemic inequities and ensure all students have access to a meaningful education. We can't get there without attendance. Showing up every day is one of the strongest predictors of future success and one of the clearest indicators that a student is engaged and connected at school. These are our attendance acronyms. You're probably familiar with most of them. CARE stands for Connect, Ask, Relate, Engage. CWAS is Child Welfare and Attendance Specialists. We also have Child Welfare and Attendance Liaisons. Okay, LCSSP is a state-funded grant. It was funded through Prop forty-seven. You might be familiar with that one, where we shifted dollars from incarceration to school-based prevention. This is our third time receiving the grant, and we've used it to build and grow the FOCUS program and improve district-wide improvements. We now are our own independent Office of Student Attendance and Engagement, and that came to be last year under Superintendent Allen. We say, "I show up, I matter, I care," a whole lot. You have your new banner. I don't know if you noticed that. We snuck it in. But you can interchange the "we" and the "I" a lot, and we do. This grant is what helps us bring that "I matter, I show up, I care" to life. The LCSSP Grant provides funding for evidence-based strategies to improve attendance, reduce dropout rates, and build safe, supportive school communities. The programs specifically that this grant funds at our school or at our district are the FOCUS Attendance Program, the FOCUS Family Program, Program Greatness, and then our Tiered Reengagement Focus Support Site Days. Our outreach infrastructure, which is our partnership with Everyday Labs, it also allows us to serve our ten high-need elementary schools while still serving and supporting attendance at all sites district-wide. I will now turn it over to Sandra.
Good evening, everyone. And I always like to start off with a quote. Attendance and engagement are the foundations for all learning. And so I want to highlight that this September is Attendance Awareness Month. It's a nationwide initiative, and we're asking our students as part of this campaign to strive for missing no more than five absences in the school year. So they do not end up chronically absent, which equals ten percent of the school year. To kick off the Attendance Awareness Month, we've launched the In It to Win It Challenge in partnership with Dicky Kengas in Communications. She's not here, but we're very grateful to her. She actually was here. She left a little bit ago. Each month, we'll be tracking which schools show the biggest attendance improvement compared to the previous year. Winners are awarded the district championship belt, which, yes, is a real belt. And many, perhaps you've seen it. It's a sizable wrestling-grade belt. And the challenge makes attendance fun, visible, and school-led. It gives us a chance to lift up sites doing extraordinary work, such as last year's winners, which included Hollywood Park, John Morris, Rosa Parks, Arthur Ray Benjamin Health Professions, and Rosemont High School. This is a way to energize school communities around a serious issue and create positive peer pressure that says showing up matters. So if you're curious about the In It to Win It Challenge and how schools are doing, you can click on the link, which is called the In It to Win It Data Sheet, or always you can go into Everyday Pro, which is our attendance data platform. To kick off the Attendance Awareness Month, we will recognize schools that have increased their attendance year over year, such as we did last year. So we're hoping that schools are excited for the challenges here. That's okay. So the FOCUS program, which is the intensive support that we provide our ten FOCUS sites, is the heart of our LCSSP work. We provide layered hands-on support to these sites where CWASs and family partnership facilities are on campus two to three times per month, supporting school sites with all, all attendance measures and engagement as well. They build MTSS foundations with site leadership, help design attendance systems, and directly support reengagement. This is where Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three all come together to make sure no student falls through the cracks. And I just want to share some photographs that highlight some of the fun activities that we had as part of our Family Focus Program, a collaboration with FACE, and a very special thank you to Dr. Isis. There you are. Who's with us here today, who in partnership basically helps create this wonderful engagement program. And I don't know if you've recognized Ms. Sarah Sheeline. She's a wonderful principal who sat down and decided to play the game of... Your favorite one, which is it? We had a, oh my goodness, I kept, a Pokemon. It was a Pokemon game. She got into it, and therefore the kids got into it as well, along with the families. So along with the Family Focus Program, we have Program Greatness. It's a data-driven focus program that, who's, and we focus on boys of color in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade who are chronically absent. And as part of that program, we do a Tier One chant rally and a Tier Two mentorship program. And you can see in some of the shots, Mr. Kevin Bracy is with the boys as part of the mentorship program. He gives them all their Greatness Squad wristbands. And then the session is ended with a glow party. And last year at MLK, we had students and families really, really get into it. As you can see, there's a parent there who is showing all the glow along with her son. And that was so much fun, I have to tell you. Okay. So the other thing I want, or the other part of our program that I'd like to focus on is our partnership with Everyday Labs. It's a strong partnership, and due to the partnership that we have with them, four thousand, the students are no longer chronic, were no longer chronically absent. They helped us prevent nine thousand absences. We recovered five hundred ninety thousand dollars in ADA, and over fourteen thousand resources were distributed to families. It's a research-based program. It's easy to scale, and it's shown to be effective. So here's a picture of what the dashboard looks like. We have two hundred sixty-three staff using the program currently. Two hundred ninety-three intervention groups have been created, and eighty-nine barriers to attendance have been identified. So these are just samples of the text nudges and the letter nudges. And for those of you who have received those from your energy provider, I don't know if you have, I sure have, letting me know that I use more electrical or gas. I think it's gas energy than my neighbor. It's the same idea. Maybe you haven't received those. I got one a couple, no. Maybe they, it looks almost exactly like the letter with the bar and everything, encouraging me to be just like my neighbors and save energy. And with that, I conclude, and I'd like to hand the mic over to Miranda Bredesen, and she will introduce herself.
I'll try to be quick. Thank you for your time. On next slide, I am introducing our new-to-us Tier Three Case Management Team. We have been blessed with two new student and family support specialists who act as intensive case managers for our students and our families. They work entirely with families to create a case plan. Case plans include weekly attendance monitoring, minimum face-to-face contact monthly, referrals and connections to appropriate agencies such as La Familia and Heartland. And if these interventions that they have performed are not successful, they are facilitating restorative SARB family conferences in an attempt to identify the barriers and challenges that might prevent a student from coming to school. We have already seen success, and we are excited to move forward with that. Let's see. Sorry, Jennifer. There we go. Okay. Next slide. As you all know, this is the California A, or California Dashboard. You can say that this is our report card for chronic absenteeism. You can see it from year to year and is open for the public to see. In two thousand twenty-two, during COVID, reflecting the uncertainty of the times, SCUSD's chronic absenteeism rate skyrocketed as a perception of what people valued changed. In an effort to reach our families' unique needs, we tailored our specific outreach to a more relational approach, connecting students and families to services needed in the community. In two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, every prior year to the last year, we saw higher rates of chronic absenteeism. This is the first year since COVID that we have started a new school year and have noticed chronic absence improvements. Preliminary data for the last year shows the same. Our data is not just data. Each percentage point translates to hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue, according to the twenty-two, twenty, or twenty-three, twenty-four attendance data. Next slide is our summary analysis of chronic absence trends, starting with two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-five. Represented is data from our FOCUS site schools that Sandra spoke of before. We have seen a positive decrease in the chronic absence rate with the overall patterns. All schools saw a sharp spike in chronic absence during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, with rates nearly doubling or tripling compared to post, or pre-pandemic, excuse me, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. Since then, most schools have shown gradual improvement, but the pace varies widely. Strongest improvements thus far, twenty-three to twenty-four and twenty-four to twenty-five, are our FOCUS sites Caroline Wenzel, dropping eight point eight percent, now at twenty-five point two, which is a strong recovery from pandemic highs. Isidore Cohen, approved by seven point two, now at sixteen point seven percent, which is one of the lowest overall rates. Martin Luther King Jr., reduced by six point four points, down to eighteen point five. One of our more notable success stories is Isidore Cohen and Su Yu. They stand out with a sustained decline, both now below seventeen percent. Schools like Nicholas and Hollywood Park are continuing to make modest gains, but they are continuing to focus on their chronic absence outreach. The takeaway is the district's overall direction is positive. Most schools are moving closer to our pre-pandemic rates. Targeted interventions are still needed for schools where rates are rising again, such as John Sloot, Bret Hart, and H.W. Harkness. These schools are making real-time adjustments, however, to lower their chronic absence rates. We continue to invest in family engagement, attendance, support staff, and restorative approaches, approaches, excuse me, and we believe they're keys to sustaining gains. For lack of time, I'm going to skip to the end. I wanted to say thank you for your support. We couldn't do it without you. We are seeing momentum in our, in our work. We are excited, and we hope that you have, are your support going forward. Thank you. And any questions you may have?
Thank you so much. Public comment?
We have none, sir.
All right, Board discussion, questions? I'm hearing a click. It's not doing anything. It's a pen click. Never mind. Member Rhodes, go ahead.
Just once again, thank you guys for your updates. I think that slide eleven was a very powerful slide, and you guys deck. But I have a more specific question. When we talk about your last slide, when we talk about Sloot Harkness going up, I think it was like three point oh. Yeah, okay. So three points. So question is, for that being an area of focus, I know you guys kind of touched on it a little bit, but can you go in a little bit more in-depth in how you guys are wanting to focus on that? And what are some of the levers you're pulling in? And is some of the, the work that they're doing in after-school program youth development going to be connected to that work? And what are some of the things that you guys are working on now? And how can we support?
Well, I can start with Sandra. Add on if I miss anything. These schools are smaller schools, and so chronic absence rates are far more volatile. Just one family will make your numbers skyrocket. Not making excuses by any means. What we noticed is these are some of the schools that have our more severely chronically absent students, hence our Tier Three Engagement Team. So we have, where we used to just have sites refer to a SARB, we now have sites refer to our Tier Three Case Management. And so what we attempt to do is meet the entire family, do a home visit, do an intensive needs assessment, figure out what the barriers are, what the challenges are for each student and the family as a whole, and work with them like a case manager would, like if you were with La Familia or one of the programs, one of our partner agencies. They will have intensive supports to where if a student slips and their chronic, or their absences start to increase again, we will immediately intervene. And that could be a phone call, a knock at the door, a call to the principal, find out what's going on. And if we, at, you know, certain measurable points, so we have the sixty days, if they're still not seeing improvement, we'll start talking about what's not working. And if there is, if it's possibly, you know, the school side, if it's, like, there is a way for every student to be successful, and their neighborhood school might not be it. That's why we have open enrollment, other options. And so we will start looking at alternative programs and different placements. We are avoiding the punitive side of attendance. There are still, there's a loose truancy court. It's not our goal to punish families when they're already struggling. So our goal will be to do everything we can to help them succeed and not just let them fall off.
Thank you for that. Follow-up question. If this is, if these schools are identified as areas of focus, even Bret Hart, my alma mater, I went there as an elementary school. The question is, what are, what are we trying, what is the goal? And then how are we helping schools start to reach the goal? So if they're increased to a certain percentage, what goal do we want them to decrease by? And then how are we following that goal? And what's the timeline of reaching that goal? Or have you guys thought deeply into it?
So we do work with school site administrators, the principal. We sit down with them to discuss what their attendance history has been. We also ask them if they have an attendance goal, already worked in their SIPSA. And we ask them to identify it, and then we work together to build a plan to reach that goal. We ask, you know, what do you think would be a good, if they don't have a goal already in mind and written out, then we work together to review the data history and come up with a reasonable and reachable goal. And then we form an attendance team, and we review the data on a hopefully bi-weekly, if not monthly, basis to see how we're doing. And we have a path of engagement that our school sites follow. So it includes a phone call to a student's family. If they've reached third absence, then if they continue to miss school, by the fifth, we send out a chronic absence letter warning the parent that the student is missing school and that missing school can be detrimental to the building blocks of their education. And then if they continue to miss, then we do bring the student in for what was formerly called the District ASSRT, but we call it an attendance, ESP, Engagement Support Plan, because we're trying to reengage the student into learning, into class. And then if that's not successful, then we do invite the family and the student for a Student Attendance Review Board meeting. And hopefully, we don't need to get to the root cause of the attendance concern for the student and family. But that's ultimately the goal, is to get to the root, either barrier or the behavior that's preventing the student from coming to school.
I, I think, thank you for that. I think I understand that part. Let me, let me, let me ask a more direct question.
Sure.
Are these school sites that aren't here identified as areas of focus, do they have a current goal?
I think we can have the school year, every year we create a goal. So we have...
Do they have, they have a goal?
They, if they have met with, they haven't met with their FPS this year. They only have an FPS because we lost three staff members. And so where it used to be a pair that supported the site, one from our department, one from FACE, now there's only one from FACE. And so the Family Partnership Facilitator will sit down, meet with the principal. And they all have a school site folder that has their end-of-the-year data sheet from last year, and it has the data from the past three or four years. And it has the data from the past three or four years. They look at their numbers, they look at the interventions that they were using then, and they talk about what they can do differently. So that meeting hasn't happened yet, but it will be happening as soon as they get out to their sites, which is in September.
Okay, so just, just very quickly. These school sites that you've identified that need to focus on them, you've also identified a goal already and a plan to-
No, the, the, the goal would be in partnership with the administrator. We don't, we don't want to-
This is my ask. And I appreciate it and I know it. This is, we're only doing as good when it comes to attendance as our most struggling school, right?
Exactly.
And so my, my ask would be that, you know, when we get information like this, it tells us our TOPS and then tells us the areas of focus, I would love to see on the report how we're focusing on those areas, right? So for our community can know that, hey, this is an area of focus. I mean, this is what we're doing. As a board as well, I would like to have updates on where the goal is for the, for where we're at there, where they're at and how they're doing simultaneously. I mean, so that, that's what we need.
I'd love that, that ask. And if you ask us back-
Yeah.
We'd like to present-
We, we would love, we would love to have you guys back. And maybe some staffing risk can connect with them around getting that information to the board. Because the work you guys are doing is critical. And for us to be able to assist in that work or hold the systems accountable to that work, we have to know also, not just the areas of focus, but what we need to do to focus on those areas. So not taking away from the presentation, but there's an urgency there because if we don't have students in seats, we don't have students in learning, like you said at the beginning.
That's right, exactly.
And it's crucial to what we do here. So thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing that information and I'll see you tomorrow.
You know what? We'd like to share school site folders with you, just to see what information, what data, everything that we provide our school sites.
With the whole board would be great.
Of course, absolutely. Thank you.
I just heard President Singh whisper a question over here and it made me think. So this chart shows chronic absent rates, which is basically binary. You're either chronically absent or you're not, right? Do we have the same data to show like how absent kids are? Like an average of how many days are being missed by school? And then we can, we can maybe like remove the outliers as well to get a sense of, okay, maybe there's one family who's going to spike it. But in general, what are the trends in certain schools?
We have access to all of that through Everyday Pro. And I believe you have access to that from this, the district level. I'll double check and-
Okay, that'd be great to see. Because I think that maybe it's going to show the same trend, but maybe it'll show something different. I think that would be-
Everyday Pro can tell you what day of the year it's most missed, what day of the week students miss the most. Yeah.
And that's where we enter goals as well. And we progress monitor them and we know where they are. We just haven't had those meetings yet.
Thank you. Thank you.
Member Rhodes? Yeah, I want to thank you for the work that you guys are doing. Chinua took all the stuff I was going to say mostly. And I, I thank you for mentioning it. I was actually going to focus more on the celebration part, which I mentioned earlier. But what a member Kayak, a member Rhodes mentioned is excellent. I think that that's probably a better use of our time to focus in those areas. But did you guys come up with a, with a championship belt?
That was Nikki. Nikki's pretty amazing.
Okay, I just think it's a great idea. It's obviously in the celebration aspect.
Crispin, actually.
She comes out, asks Crispin to hand the belt, so it's a real celebration.
So the list of schools is on slide seven, I guess, of the schools. I thought it was, I thought it was only high schools that were doing it. So this is really cool that all schools, district wide are. Thank you.
So to confirm, the championship is not in your, in your area right now? June, it's September.
I wanted to bring it for you, but it's currently housed at Rosemont High.
That doesn't count, so it's some, I'm just playing. These are really important points. I, I do want to bring up one thing. This enrollment conversation has been a big discussion up here at this board for, for years now. And member Rhodes mentioned a bunch of things that I think are super important to focus on. My, what I'm hearing though is, and you tell me if it's a staffing issue or what's going on, but I feel like a letter is not going to, like, I mean, if I get a, I'm not going to lie. I check my mail every two weeks, so I don't know if I want to get a letter. I want to pay attention to the letter. My question is really, do we have the personnel to actually go out and knock on doors? And be like, you're not in class, you need to show up to school? Because what I'm hearing is a call, a letter will catch the kid when they do show up to class and then we'll talk to them. So I'm not hearing like door knocking. And I think, I will say it for myself, and I'm going to pretend that most of us or some of us may have the ability or desire to do this. But we're in our communities, right? We already knock on doors for many other reasons. And I would say utilize us, especially for some of these neighborhoods.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm volunteering, member Rhodes, but he is a Bret Hart alumni. And I also know that he's involved in his community to the point where he's probably going to knock on some doors, right? So I, I feel like we just want to figure out how to be helpful without stepping on toes. Like we want to get kids to that classroom. And even if this is an outlier, where like it's a small school site, I still think seeing numbers like 39% absenteeism is going to affect not just those students, but also when you're sitting in class and you look around and you see empty seats, how inspired do you really feel?
It affects peers, teachers, the momentum of the class, the lessons, everything. To your point about home visits, actually, what do you have it? Well, I mean, we do, home visits for us are a best practice. Do we have enough staff? No, we do not have enough staff. But I can tell you that when we're trying to reach out, we always tell our clerks and techs, if you're not able to reach a family by phone, please go out to the home, knock on the door, knock on the door with the ESP in your hand, with the social worker, and say, we've been trying to contact you, we're worried about you and that's why we're here. If we're not able to reach someone by a home visit, we have, I don't know at this point how many we have left, but we have door hangers that we leave for our families, letting them know that we've knocked on their door, that we'd like to contact, have them contact us back and that, you know, we have tried reaching them. But you're absolutely right, we don't have enough staff to be able to knock on every door. But we have 15,000, but it is best practice and we do, do, do encourage home visits.
And not, not to come up with more clustered idea, like more ideas, but one idea is truly like, if you map it, you'll notice that oftentimes a lot of students are in the same housing complex or the same apartment complex.
Oh, yes.
So kind of, there's got to be alternatives, saying killing two birds with one stone, because I really, I like birds. What is it? Something about flowers is what-
Actually, we have in, in recent past, when we've done our summer home visits, I've obtained not just a list of chronically absent students, but where they live, so that we could map, not only figure out who were living, who was living with whom, so that we reduce our gas mileage, but increase our efficiency as far as reaching students within a particular area. Certain apartment complexes, for example. I know you don't want, I did this during the pandemic. I would come and go and I'd pass the same apartment complex. I could have done this while I was here and I could have done that. So yes, doing things smarter is better and more, you know, more bank for your, your effort. So thank you for that suggestion, absolutely.
And I'd just like to respond on the nudges and letters. It is the number one intervention out there. If you do any sort of Googling of attendance interventions, Todd Rogers from Harvard has done the study on these hard copy mail USPS letters. And they are the number one intervention as far as outreach goes. And that's above and beyond text messages, because we do. We flood text messages and we do emails, but people just kind of toss it to the side. That letter sits, you know, on the counter, goes on the fridge, ends up wherever it ends up. And so it seems like it's not the best. It also sometimes upsets people and then they remember, then they talk about attendance.
Yeah. No, and I'm not, I'm not comparing it to an email or a text message. I'm really thinking about personnel and the ability to actually go knock on a door. Because as someone who hid report cards, I know it's easy to grab the mail before your parents grab the mail. Member Benjamin?
Yeah, so I, I have a comment and a question. So the attendance is a community issue, right? And so I just have a kind of a suggestion, which is, or a comment. Does this work at any level intersect with the community partners that we have relationships with? A. And then B, there's on slide 11, it says 61% of students improved attendance after receiving day one intervention. What, what was that, one day of, of improvement or, or? And what is everyday, what does that everyday intervention one look like?
If I understand, your first question was asking if improving chronic absenteeism related to community interventions? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
We, we have community partners that we work with, CBOs. And so they interact with these, our students, right? And after-school programming, things like that. And so I'm asking, is this work tied into that so we can address the attendance issue?
We work directly with Heartland, that's one, one agency, for example, DHA. We work with them as part of our family engagement activities. We invite them out to table at those family engagement activities that we hold. And then we also invite them to our student attendance review board meetings so that when we discover a root cause of absenteeism, we're able to provide services and support on the spot to the families as part of the SAR process or SAR meeting.
If I may, I used to be a clerk at John Cabrillo Elementary School. If you can hear me better? Sure, sure. I used to be a clerk at John Cabrillo Elementary School. So I was, you know, in the thick of it. I saw the kids, I knew the families, I knew the backgrounds of why they weren't coming. I built those relationships, I called them every day, where are you, where are you, where are you? That really built a level of trust that you don't get from the district level necessarily. And with working as a clerk and getting to know those students, we had a parent who started a job at Heartland because we felt that community impact together that we needed to reach these kids. Something was missing. And now she works there, we collaborate with Heartland, we've reached a lot of people. We've, I know at John Cabrillo, I connected with a lot of people to La Familia, lots of services that were available there. So many great things happened while I was there. We reached so many children.
Okay, that's, that's good. I think ELOP will have a list of, of CBOs that we work with in specific communities. Because to President Singh's point, it's going to take some door knocking.
Oh, it does.
Because a lot of times that letter, some of the parents, believe it or not, I hate to say this, but some of the parents, they can't even, they don't, they can't even read the letter. So it's going to take the door knocking. And then can you give us an example of an everyday intervention one? What would that look like?
Everyday Pro does things called text nudges. And we have prescribed dates that we do them. You'll get, if you're a parent in the district, you'll get a text message saying, "School's starting next week," or "Your child missed school." That's what those level one interventions are, is just the little nudges. You know, it's before we make those phone calls, before the emails go out, before the home visits, the nudges, the emails, the letters, that sort of thing. It's just a gentle reminder, hey, we're here, you know, we care, we see you. Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you guys.
Sorry, I get pretty passionate about it.
All right, 10.4 MTSS Proof of Concept Updates.
Good evening, everyone. Erin Findley, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and here with Matt Coleman, our MTSS Director, to give you a quick MTSS Proof of Concept update. Let's see. Just want to ingress into the vision of MTSS in SCU in Sac City. This vision was developed as part of our MTSS design team, built on a culture of support and collaboration and designed to reduce systemic disparities. Our multi-tiered system of supports framework ensures every student has a safe, responsive educational experience, high-quality instruction, and limitless opportunities. I'm not going to go into detail on this slide because we've shared this information with you before, but we like to put it up here as a reminder of the tiered model as well as the whole-child model that make up a multi-tiered system of supports. Excuse me. My apologies, you need to do this. Now Matt, now it's catching up here. I'm just-
All right. So make sure she's okay.
I'm okay, I'm okay.
Okay. When we last presented to y'all the board, these were the key steps that we identified in our MTSS implementation. So tonight, we're just going to provide an update to each of these bullet points.
I'm back. Thank you, Matt. It shouldn't be allergy season, but it is. So here we are. So the first item, so we're going to go through each one of these. We just wanted to highlight when we left in the spring where we were. And so we'll go through each one. The first one, being continued alignment of the MTSS framework and the BPSB action plan. We are in the process of really digging deeply into the action plan and aligning it with MTSS so that it, it is the end result of the action plan. And we'll be coming back to you with more information about that. But just some highlights here about the connections between the two and how MTSS is really the bridge between the action plan and the outcomes of the action plan and ensuring that our students have access and benefit from this tiered support model.
So since our last update, the design team has remained active and expanded its work beyond the common definitions, common assurances, teaming structures, and fidelity measures. To include new progress on a communications plan, process maps, roles and responsibilities, and a school readiness survey. So we drafted the beginnings of a communication plan. This establishes structures for how we communicate to all of our stakeholders. We developed process maps, which are visual guides of how MTSS decision-making and intervention pathways flow. We outlined the roles and responsibilities to better define and align expectations for all the people that make this work a reality. And we developed a school readiness survey to assess site capacity for readiness of MTSS implementation. This was foundational in determining our 10 Proof of Concept sites. And I'll speak a little bit later of what the next steps are for the, for the design team. So as a result of the design team's work in developing foundational components of our MTSS framework and the energy and commitment to begin implementation of this framework, we collaborated with our labor partners to establish a Proof of Concept implementation plan, which was later negotiated and agreed upon. I think that's on the agenda tonight. This agreement identified 10 elementary sites that will pioneer the opera, opera, hm?
Operationalizing.
There it is. Yeah, it's, it's pretty late. Of the framework. So each site has dedicated staffing supports, including a site-based MTSS specialist and reduced ratios for social workers, psychologists, and nurses. Our plan also defined the core teaming structures to guide MTSS implementation and established common definitions for MTSS, tier one, tier two, and tier three. To launch this work, the week before school started, we held full-day professional learning sessions with our sites. These sessions focused on building our shared collective understanding of these foundations, the teaming structures, the definitions, the assurances, and the process maps to ensure consistent and collaborative start to our implementation process. So this is our 10 Proof of Concept sites. They were selected based on readiness, need, and equity. And you'll notice we have representation in each of your respective areas, representing a diverse student and geographic population. So here are some of just the major milestones so far. And really, it's only been a few months and only a few weeks of school. As discussed earlier, we reached an agreement to begin this important work. And as part of that agreement, we have MTSS specialists at our sites. We've hired seven of 10, actually, as of today, eight of 10, and had interviews actually just before today where we're going to offer another position. So hopefully nine of 10 by the end of the week. And position closed today, so that 10th one, we're still actively, we're actively recruiting, we're interviewing. So onboarding, including relationship building, foundational training on MTSS, and then site discovery tools so they can get ready to work with their sites. Specialists are already at sites, working with site leaders, setting up teaming structures, and getting that implementation process started. As far as our pre-service launch, Erin spoke a little about this earlier tonight. But we had over 200, 200 educators attend these days. We focused on building our shared understanding. And sites had collaborative time structured to really think about how we're going to put this framework into action at their respective sites. So this is just a few pictures of- So this is just a few pictures of what that looked like our first few days. Teams collaborating, mapping out what their resources look like and their teaming structures currently are, and then getting closer and closer to the aligned framework that we designed in that design team space. And so finally, these are just our next steps. We will continue our collaborative MTSS design work. Our MTSS design team will continue refining our framework. We have some work to do still. We're also going to begin how this is going to look in secondary spaces, as schedules and just systems look different at the secondary level than they do at elementary school. We've also started this implementation at these 10 sites. We're finalizing staffing, as we talked about. We're establishing this foundational structures and systems at sites. And we're providing coaching and support to these leadership teams. So we've calendar out the year-long scope and sequence for what this coaching and support's going to look like, and we have dedicated coaching starting at the end of this month. We're going to continue to align the BP, the Black Parallel School Board Action Plan with our framework to ensure, just like Erin said, the work that we're doing is really meaningful and not just compliance-driven, but it's actually meeting the needs of what we're trying to accomplish here. And then lastly, what we're going to do in this space is study what's happening at these 10 sites, so that we can scale and improve as we're moving along. So with that being said, we're open to questions and discussion.
Thank you. Brian, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Thank you. For discussion, comments, questions? Member Jean.
So we just spent a lot of time talking about getting kids to school, but this is about what we do when they're there. So thank you for the very thorough work we're doing. I'm just so excited to, I remember sitting in the audience three-plus years ago when I was considering running and listening to the presentation, and my teacher heart was just hurting, because it felt like so much was missing from what MTSS was designed to be and do, and this is the fulfillment of what it's designed to be and do. So thank you for the work you're doing. I don't have any questions, I just wanted to say thanks, and I'm excited to see what happens at our 10 Proof of Concept sites through the year. So I'm looking forward to continuous updates on that.
Thank you, Member Jean. Seeing no other comments, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our public hearing section, we have 11.1 AB 1200, Public Disclosure and Approval of the MOU between Sac City Unified and Sac City Teachers Association. Dr. McCarr.
Hi, I'm Consey McCarr, Chief Human Resource Officer, and joining me is Janay Marking, the CBO, Chief Business and Operation Officer. And we are here to ask for your approval, AB 1200, related to a recent agreement reached with the Sacramento City Teachers Association. This round of negotiations, we had, as you can see by the names listed on the board, we had a full team. We approached these negotiations with this full team, recognizing that our system needs all these perspectives, as well as others that joined us at different parts of the negotiation process, to ensure we came away with something that was comprehensive. As a goal of the district, the work around MTSS, some of the work that you just heard, as well as others that we are yet to engage in, was central in this round of negotiations as one of our goals. So just a thanks to our team that put in a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of work, as well as the SEIU negotiation team that did the same, to reach where we were able to reach. This was a full contract negotiations, with every article open and able to be negotiated and engage in conversations around important components. So I'll just quickly take you through, because as you can see on the screen, there are a number of articles. I will take you through highlights, but you have the complete agreement as needed. Key provisions of Article One recognition was really to add some additional job descriptions, classifications, that we created through the process, and ensure that the contract was up to date with those new positions, job descriptions. The effect of the agreement is that this is the new agreement. It will replace the old. As we looked at hours of employment, we worked to capture the practice that the current, the district currently was using around utilizing arts and musics in schools, the AMS funding to provide potentially additional prep time for elementary school teachers through the use of VAPA teachers, visual and performing arts. We already had a practice in place with new teacher orientation being held before school starts, as well as new employee orientation being held monthly for incoming educators. This now put them in the contract in the place that they needed to be, both positive things we want to ensure keep going. Article Six of evaluations, we talked about and agreed to engage in a revision of the evaluation tool that aligns with the current CSTPs, the California Standards for Teaching Profession, because it had been a while. And leaves, we did a number of things, including adding family members, such as nieces and nephews, to the definition of immediate family, allowing employees to use their sick leave while on Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, as well as those who, unfortunately, if they are suffering incident of assault during work, utilize three days of leave for the purposes of recovering and receiving treatment when they apply for and submit the worker's comp, engage in that process. Article 11, safety conditions, there's still some work to be done, but we agreed to establish some guidelines and parameters on how we're going to move forward as we look at the very important components related to safety at our school sites and our classrooms. In Article 12, compensation, there was a 2% across-the-board increase for this current year for 25-26, and for next year, a 2% across the board, which would include our 25-26 salary schedules, so the 2% based on that. Both years include three professional development days, as well as a stipend for teachers who hold bilingual certification and who use that in their jobs, or bilingual teachers. If they have a BCLAD and they're using it in their, in their teaching assignment, they get the $1,500 annual stipend. Our SLPs, our speech-language pathologist, sorry, are going to be on a new salary schedule. And that salary schedule is going to include an additional 6% on top. As you all know, that is an area we are working really hard to recruit in our high number of vacancies. SLPs, nurses, social workers, psychologists will also receive full years in working in other, other, other areas when they come into the school district, such as hospitals. Waldorf teachers will be reimbursed for their level-up trainings that take place every summer as they move. We will also have clinical fellows for our SLPs, integrated into our new teacher support department, which specifically supports novice educators, and have support providers that will work with them, and they will receive a stipend similar to those that our current support providers receive. We will also be implementing a mid-August start to the school year, with an end of May end, with the first semester ending before we go to winter break. You will be hearing more about that. In Article 17, around class size, we will be doing a number of things, including continuing with the release days, three release days per school year for our special education educators, for planning, preparing, developing, implementing, and monitoring IEPs. We will look at and are adjusting the staffing allocation related to nurses, psychologists, and social workers, to ensure that needs are met and there is some systemness amongst how those are in the system. Article 19, we will not, we will continue to follow the law and not contract out bargaining at work without prior written notice, as well as it relates to artificial intelligence. And this contract will be for two years, from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027. And we reached this agreement on June 27. It ended on the 30th, so right before it ended.
Thank you, Chief McCarr. So here you have outlined the overall cost of the agreement for each year. What you're seeing here is the amount of estimated additional cost per year. So in 25-26, we're estimating an additional $10.6 million. In 26-27, on top of adding the $10.6 million, it's an additional cost of $22.5 million per year going forward. And then 27-28, on top of the two amounts above it, there's an additional $4.7 million projected going forward. As Chief McCarr said, this agreement most certainly was an investment in staff, both on competitive compensation, but then also additional staff out at our schools, working directly with our students for that wraparound care that is needed. It is a large investment from our budget, at a time where we are working to keep ourselves in balance and fiscally solvent. The board received a copy of the letter that SCOE provided to us. We received it yesterday, it was sent to the board today, which gives, SCOE doesn't approve or disapprove an AB 1200 disclosure, they review it and provide feedback, and per ED code can require some additional follow-ups. So just a couple of excerpts from that letter. As of right now, and we know that we're waiting on unaudited actuals, but SCOE finds that we will meet our required reserve in the current year, 25-26, but are projecting fiscal insolvency for 26-27 if we don't make corrective action, right? Like, if there are no changes, the road we're on is insolvency. But we will make the changes to balance. SCOE is projecting that on top of the $23 million that we had identified in our projections, they find that potentially we will need to find an additional $35 million in savings on top of that. Again, these numbers will adjust as we receive unaudited actuals, which will come to the board at the next meeting. Per Education Code 42127.6, SCOE finds that we are at risk of not being a going concern. And you might at first think that that sounds like a good thing, but this is a specific accounting term, and in fact, you actually want to be a going concern. Being a going concern means that you have an ongoing operation. Lack of going concern means that you are either the end of your operation, or the threat of the end of your operation is ahead. So SCOE is signaling to us that without action, within ED code, we could be determined lack of going concern. So per that, SCOE is requesting that we revise our rightsizing plan to cover these increased costs and resubmit it with our first interim report. Our first interim report needs to demonstrate that we will be able to meet the fiscal reserve requirement, not only in the current year, but in the two subsequent years. And per AB 1200 requirements, we need to provide an updated budget to SCOE within 45 days. However, that aligns with the first interim timeline, so the first interim will count for that 45-day update back to SCOE. So we absolutely have work to do. We know that we have work to do. There are difficult decisions ahead. I have made the commitment to SCOE that what needs to happen to balance the budget will happen. We don't yet know what that means, because we have to go through a process. But again, overall, it most certainly was a good round of bargaining. We did some really wonderful things. We have amazing resources going out to our schools, working with our students and communities, exactly the conversations we should be having. But as we know, we have finite resources, so therefore, we have to just find the balance within what we can afford, and those things that maybe aren't working for us or have expired, and it's time to let them go. But of course, you will be updated additionally when we come back together in two weeks and the unaudited actuals are presented to the board, and we will continue to work together on what this looks like, and the decisions that have to be made in the weeks and months ahead. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. Want any public comment, Brian?
We do not.
All right, if we do not, that means the public hearing is now closed. So for discussion, for comments, questions? Member Jean.
That time it wasn't the pen click. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all of the hard work that went into getting an agreement done before the deadline, before it expired, the previous one or the current one expired. When was the last time that happened? Long time ago.
Yeah, a long, long time.
Long, long time ago. So I just want to celebrate, like, the, the culture of collaboration and working together and having rich, deep conversations about the needs that our certificated folks are seeing. And I just want to celebrate, Janay used that word, investment. And so I want to just call out some of those ideas, like, in this agreement, we have invested in prep time, because teachers are always talking about our classified, or our certificated staff, always talking about time. We've invested in safety, the reality that right now, our world can feel very unsafe, and our, our folks deserve to feel safe. We've invested in additional leaves, making sure that people have the time they need with their families in specific situations. In previous ones, we lowered class size. And we've continued, continued to invest in benefits, and now we've invested even more in salary, and even particularly in those areas where we know we want to attract folks because we have shortages. I think it's just an ongoing commitment to the heart we have for our students and our education, and for the folks who come and serve tirelessly every day, to make sure that those kids get that education. So I believe there's that famous quote that says, "Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." And I think we can be really proud about the values of what we're investing in with this agreement. So thank you for your work and staying true to those values.
All right, thank you, Member Jean. I will just say thank you, but also thank you to your team. And then I think this is also a reminder that oftentimes, we look at these moments in signing these contracts, and we start showing two organizations separate from each other, but in reality, all our teachers are, are staff members of this district. So at the end of the day, everyone here is part of Sac City Unified, and this is a win for Sac City Unified. With that, does anyone want to make a motion? Member Navarro? Member Jean with the second. We'll start with the studio preferential vote.
Aye. Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was surprised you left, I didn't want to call you out.
It's just extra steps. Good evening, Board members. Consey McCarr, Dan Shalick here with me, and we are here to present the hearing and adoption of the district's initial proposals regarding bargaining with UPE, our United Professional Educators. So these are principals, our assistant principals, our site instructional coordinators, our certificated administrative staff here at the CERNIS Center. And as we finish one, you all know we are currently negotiating with SEIU. This is so that we can also begin negotiating with UPE. Our negotiations team, as we have done the past several cycles, as you've seen, are not just negotiation teams of two or three or four people, we have full teams, again, wanting to ensure that we have the perspectives that we need at the table, bringing others in as needed throughout the process, to ensure that we have what is needed to reach negotiated agreements. So this is part of the process for us to let you know, to get your, your approval, so we can begin to move forward, start those meetings, and engage in the negotiation process. And this is called sunshining. So we are here sunshining for that purpose. The UPE collective bargaining agreement ends June 30 of 2026. Right, so we are starting in plenty of time. We know we will have 25-26 in terms of re-opener to talk about limited things, but then we will have beginning 26-27 and beyond for full contract negotiations. So we want to start and engage in that process now, and work towards an agreement we can all be really happy about as we serve our students. Again, these are principals, our assistant principals, our site instructional coordinators, and our certificated management administrators here at the CERNIS Center. So with that, in the UPE agreement...
So with that, in the UPE agreement, or the UPE collective bargaining agreement, there are a number of potential articles that we will be engaging in. One, cleanup language, looking to align part of what we just did in our agreement with SETA, really focused on MTSS and how all of that ties into the system. So we have, we want to ensure that across, we are on the same page and have things in place that support that work at every level within the system. So? So that's it.
All right, thank you. Public comment?
No, sir.
Anyone have questions? All right, I'll move. Do we have a second? Perfect. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you, and don't go anywhere. All right.
Thank you.
Is that it? 11.3?
We moved that one, so we're moving on to the rest, so thank you for that one.
Oh, okay, all right.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Allen, Board members. So the next item is basically the sunshining from UPE to us. So we are in receipt of their intention to begin the bargaining process, which we just described in the last item, and so we're looking forward to that.
All right, is there public comment?
We do not have any.
Okay, is there board discussion? My comment is, this is so bureaucratically boring and weird. Like, it's very clear what we're doing, but okay, since it's not an actual item, thank you. That's it, okay, perfect. Oh, Member Jean?
I just wanted to respond to you. I get that it's bureaucratically boring, but in terms of bargaining, these are public goods, and this is the importance of our labor partners being able to say this is what we think is important, and our district to say this is what we think is important, and to make sure that the community knows we are bargaining on those things. So I understand why it's not exciting, but it is actually very vital, and it's a bummer that it doesn't get more attention.
I meant the jump between 11.2 and 11.3.
Got it.
Not the actual bargaining.
Not the process at all.
I love the fact that I'm getting what they're fighting for. I just meant, that's just a weird transition from 11.2 to 11.3. Yes. All right, thank you. All right, 12.0, we have Mr. Ralston for the next three items. Excited.
More bureaucratic stuff.
We love it.
President Singh, Superintendent Allen, members of the board. My name is Chris Ralston, Assistant Superintendent Facilities, and I have shown that I can spend your money very well, but all good things come to an end unless I have great individuals who are here with me tonight that help us stay compliant with our bonds and our Bond Oversight Committee, and also give us expert financial advice. I want to introduce Mr. Scott Dale and our bond fiscal advisor and Ms. Meredith Johnson, our bond attorney, who are here tonight to help answer the questions on the next three items, if you have any. Item number one, refinancing of a past bond series. This will give us a better rate, refund of $57 million.
Brian, do you have any public comment?
No, sir.
Do you have any board discussion, questions, comments? Member Navarro?
Is this just like a refinance type of thing?
Refinance. Better terms.
Okay, is that it? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second. All right, let's go to student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 12.2, Resolution 3512.
12.2 is the issuance of bonds for Series C of Measure H. This will be our final series in sale of Measure H, as it will be exhausted, for $262 million, $263 million.
All right, thank you. Public comment?
No, sir.
Board discussion? Member Navarro? Oh, I still want to.
No, I'll be asked since you called on me. So what is this one?
This is, 750 million was Measure H. We have sold two Series already and received that cash. This is to receive the rest of the authorization of Measure H and $262 million, and that will mean Measure H is over.
I'm on more details, but that's, I think it's...
Those are actually very important questions. The public is watching. I'm going to move. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
And Member Jean?
Aye.
So 12.3, Resolution 3511.
This is Series A, our first sale of Measure D, which was passed last year. Of the $543 million available to us, this is to get your authorization to sell Series A.
Public comment?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. I don't see any board discussion, so I'll see if there's a motion.
So moved. So moved.
I'll second. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Navarro? Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate you. Glad to get it together, guys. All right, 12.4, approving the submission of provisional internship permit applications to the California Commission on Teacher Credentially.
All right. Good evening, Board President Singh, Board members, and Superintendent Allen. My name is Christina Penya. I'm the Human Resource Audit and Complaint Analyst, and I'm here this evening to present to you and ask you for approval for a provisional internship permit application. I'm here this evening because ED Code provides an opportunity for districts to waive portions of credentialing requirements in order to allow educators a little more time to complete their credential requirements. In order to submit the provisional of internship permit applications for certificated employees in need, the CCTC, which is the California Commission on Teacher Credentially, requires a public notice to process along with board approval prior to submission of provisional internship permit applications. The applicant listed here is currently working on meeting their program requirements in order to become eligible for their intern or preliminary credential. These permits will allow the teachers the opportunity to complete their requirements set forth by the CCTC and remain in their position while they continue their work with students. Staff recommends approving this permit request.
Thank you. Public comment?
We do not.
Board discussion, questions? All right, I'll move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Benjamin?
Aye.
Member Navarro?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, our future board meetings, we have two upcoming on the 18th of September and then October 2nd. Motion to adjourn?